All right, I will call the city council work session on the community campus.
Hey, well, good evening, council. Thank you for this opportunity tonight. This is one of several meetings that we're going to be bringing the community campus park improvement project before you. So tonight's objective is to meet with the consultants and tonight we have Brian Martin with Langau Hansen Landscape Architect. And they're going to be responsible for the design, development, construction documents, cost estimates, construction permits, bidding assistance, construction oversight and public engagement. We also have with us virtually, I believe Maddie is on the line with us. She is with American Ramp Company. And American Ramp Company will be the company working on the design of the skate park and pump track. And their work also includes a thorough and highly interactive public engagement process with skaters and bikers. And we actually had one of those meetings today, in fact. So tonight, Brian with Langau Hansen will present on the next steps of the park project, the goals and vision. There'll be an overview of the public engagement process and we'll end with time for discussion and feedback from the council. Maddie with American Ramp Company is available to provide an update on the design and public engagement portion of the skate park and pump track if desired. And I guess with that quick overview, I will hand it over to Brian with Langau Hansen.
Thanks. So it's great to be here. We have a chance to speak with some of you so far, but it's great to meet the rest of council tonight and present. Start this work together. So really see this as an opportunity to start the dialogue. See you guys as a sounding board to really get feedback or collaborate with for this process. Share my screen here. I should mention that while I'm the one that's here tonight, there's a whole design team. Langau Hansen Landscape Architects are joined by JLA with consultants. You might remember them from the Trails Master Plan, Parks Master Plan Update that worked for the city. And civil engineer, electrical, geotechnical, we just got the survey, the complete survey back. The whole site, which is great, ready to hit the ground running earlier than expected. So it's always good to start. Not surpassing the deadlines. So basically, I just wanted to communicate that these are all consultants we've worked with in the past. Have really great collaborative relationship with all these folks and they're all excited. I want to say on there we have, they're all excited about this great opportunity. And as we, you know, as we go out to the public, we have the first open house. I'll get into the schedule in a little bit as we go next week. First public open house. Really just want to emphasize to them and to you tonight that this is really. That there's going to be really a robust public outreach component with this. We want to go hear voices, bring the community input back into some options and then what gets folded into the final plan that's accepted. So I think that, you know, there's a lot of text on this first page. I think Rochelle actually did a really good job of covering most of the, all the text in the paragraphs. Just the background of this project. I think many folks are familiar with some of the recent, or some of the past planning efforts and how we got where we're at today. And we just want to be sure we communicate that with the community as well. I think just highlighting at the bottom, there's a list of several bulleted site amenities that rose to the top with the prior master planning efforts. Of things that the community valued and they wanted to see maybe they were underrepresented in other parks or not at all. Or wanting added to the park system, playgrounds, picnic areas, obviously parking. Trails. This is really a great opportunity to plug in with the rest of the trail network down at the top of the block there. Play area and then also the skate park and the bike pump track being a part of this project as well. Just to confirm, you guys can all see this right in front of you. Display is gray. It's a little bit small, but I will start with the overall schedule. That's the, the bar at the top there, looking at twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and just touching into twenty twenty-five a little bit. Just to give you guys, bring you up to speed on what the project, the park schedule is at this point, starting in the yellow. That's where we're at now. So that's January, February, March, the next three months of really hitting the ground running, really intensive public outreach. Meeting with the project advisor committee, meeting with parks, trails advisory board. Then again, meeting with the council several times. And then that followed up monthly with public open houses where we invite the public in, show them. And really in January, it's really about fact finding, getting everybody up to speed. February is bringing three design options to the public. And then March is about one final refined plan that we're going to be presenting. Ultimately, why I keep saying that it's, you know, it's really tight in those three months is April first is when we take all of that information, that one final site plan. Package it up with a good narrative, letters of testimony from the public and others and submit for that grant for the Oregon State Parks Funding. There's a significant amount of money that we feel we're well seeded to gain some of those grant funding for this park. And that would really help the budget of the park stretch funding out in a really good way. It's a lot of work between now and April first, but we feel confident that we're ready to do that. And we have worked with a number of other cities, municipalities over the years to successfully secure that grant funding for their park projects as well. Real quickly, you'll see the, the kind of red, light reddish color that starts the construction document phase. Where we take that design and really make it something that the contractors can build from. So that starts in April. Kind of wraps up with the land use process, hopefully getting approval in October. That overlaps with, you'll see below is the bidding and permitting or city officials making sure everything is permitted properly. And then ultimately, with getting a winning bid, construction ideally starting early twenty twenty-four. And lasting, we're showing it here eleven months, a nice generous amount of time to get that project park built. Then opening early in twenty twenty-five. With the bidding taking place late in twenty twenty-three, we see that as a advantageous time of year to bid the project. Contractors are really looking to line up their work for that coming year. And then already touched on this, but just looking at the, the larger enlargement down below, that was January, February and March. Kind of just really zooming in on those activities. We had to get really nitty gritty with making sure that we had each of these milestones. In order to make that April first deadline for the grants. So you'll see a repeating rainbow of colors. Here's we're meeting with the, the PAC, the project advisory committee. Parks Board here at council and then ultimately we'll take this similar same message and then present it to the public. And this first meeting will be next, next week on Thursday. And then the whole cycle repeats. It's helped again in February, meeting with the same folks, same order. And that'll be with the three options that will, based on input that we receive, have been receiving and then will receive at the open house. Develop those three options that are presented in February. Take the input that we receive of those three options. Ultimately, it's, it's never one option. It's pieces from all three that get folded into one plan. And that final plan will present in March to solicit more feedback. All the while, there are online surveys in each month where we, where we reach out to the public and solicit their feedback as well. So while there's the opportunity to show up to the public open house in person, we're basically replicating that same information online. So you can, you can find able to attend in person, have that same experience online.
Do you want questions during?
Oh, yes. Sorry. Go ahead and interrupt me.
Can you, how, how are you going to do the online? Would that be Facebook?
Held on the, handled on the city's website. So it'll be almost clearing house of all the imagery and all the information of sending people or letting people know about open houses. And then prominently we'll list open surveys at that point and announce upcoming surveys to solicit feedback. And they'll get more and more specific. The first one, I'll show you some slides in a minute. They're more general nature. He's getting, it's kind of touchy feely. Gathering people's interest in the park and then it gets more specific as we coalesce around more specific design ideas.
Do you have a methodology for kind of eliminating the possibility of the same people? Filling out the survey multiple times, you know, step in the ballot box, so to speak.
I think so. And we, we're, so we're working on JLA and this is something that they do a lot, but that's, I mean, that's definitely a great question. Yeah.
Not that Kathleen would do that, but you know.
Asking for a friend. No, I mean, it's, it's an issue.
It's a good question.
We'll verify that and make sure to respond and let you know.
Yeah. And it's, and I think the key thing is the survey is just one input or a set of inputs.
And that's the digital version and you're totally right because then I'll show in a minute, but in the open house, the public open house will have boards. Or people can, in essence, fill out the survey with dots or with some sort of response in person. So that'll be another way that we're reflecting, asking information. And then also the same in-person opportunities with the advisory committee and the P tab as well. So it's one of the many ways of soliciting that. Which I think leads well into this next page, right in the middle there, the outreach activities. There's the project website that we've been talking about, which will host a fact sheet and other outreach materials. We are in the midst of developing a list of stakeholder stakeholders that will be interviewed in different focus groups. That will be making contact with throughout the design process. That's something that we'll be working with JLA to conduct those interviews. And then, as I mentioned, the advisory group and the parks board as well as open houses and surveys. And then there's also, it says tabling events. That's just where, you know, we literally set up a table with information at some public space. And just tell people about the project and it's another opportunity to hear from folks at that point. This just gets into some of the messaging. This is a couple of slides that were developed by our public engagement consultant. Some of the messaging of what we're going through, the process of the park. And then at the bottom, obviously, how you can get involved. And all this information basically what I've been sharing up to through this slide is more. Back house informations, let's speak, not that we'd be re-presenting that, but I'll start to show you this next slide, looking at. For, for next week's open house, maybe this would be one of the leading boards that we would show people to start to explain the site. Or we help people understand it from a different perspective. We get really focused in on the site itself, but this really takes a step back and looks at the site here outlined in red. How it is immediately north of downtown, but immediately south of a large park forest experience. It's a really special site. Bring the trails and the connections down to Sandy River. Helping people see beyond just the boundaries of the park itself.
Is this, I think this is a good spot for me to tack on what I was mentioning earlier. We got to this part of the presentation earlier. And now we start to see the confusion between the community campus, the space, including the city property down there versus the park. And so I think this is where rebranding this separate from campus will help these graphics and other things to be a little more targeted. Hope you have to keep it all straight too.
Is this, I know that we, when we had spoken a week or so ago, there was some other language on this. More in keeping with what we want to be labeling things and presenting to the public.
The, the challenge for us is historically that area called city property, combined with what you've labeled the community campus site, has been the community campus site. And so we just, I think we just need to be real crisp moving forward about the difference, you, differentiating between the two pieces.
Yeah.
Because we don't have a plan for that blue area yet.
Yeah. And it, as far as we understand, the area red, bound by red is what we're focusing on.
Yeah, that's, we're excited about that. It's just making sure that we don't bring the past and let it bog down.
Yeah. And one thing that we're doing behind the scenes is developing a, a list of those, like maybe sticky issues, how we tackle those. So that we're like, all of us at the open house, we have the same message that we're saying to everybody that's in attendance and. Practiced it of.
Let me get your stickies out. Tell me about the pool.
One option might be to consider labeling, instead of it saying community campus site, just saying, you know, Cedar Ridge Park or something. And then putting purple, calling that community campus site or something like that, or, or city property. I don't have a strong opinion, but.
No, no, I, I, I get, I get where you're going. My only concern would be changing the name right now. I feel like it, we should, if we're. We should do what we need to do to come up with a good name and then that's the name. What I, what I, what I, me personally, I wouldn't want to see us change the name and then change the name. And then change the name. And that's, that's, so if we start calling it the Cedar Ridge Park, then people, that becomes the park site. Even if you're calling it. I, I feel like, I mean, to me, at this juncture, and maybe you guys disagree. I think if, if we stay with very clear boundaries and people understand where those are, I think calling it the community campus right now. While we do the research for a good name, I think that message can be clear.
So I, as long as we go something generic, you know, even removing the word site, park, it's been less confusing, right?
Sure.
Hey, I've got a question or a comment on that certain thing is, is that most people that are looking at this thing know it as the community center. Or maybe Cedar Ridge old facility. So I, I agree with Lori. I think we need to be careful about confusing the issue. And maybe as the process goes along, building a good name that identifies a spot. But let's, I think in my mind, let's keep it so that we don't get a confused message out there. And let's move forward on something that people know what we're talking about.
Maybe keep the word future on there to future community campus park or something. So we're very, anyway, that's.
I like the idea of coming up with a name. I really do like that.
It's not really Cedar Ridge anymore. It's, you know, some other thing. So coming up with a name that identifies it. Might be a nice symbology in the future.
Yes.
And if I could add to that too, one of the things that staff is working on would be a park naming policy. Because we don't have a park naming policy right now. And so that is something that we're aware of and, and it would involve potentially involving the community. Having a selection committee to help with that. And so we're, we're identifying and working through that process.
I, that seems more complicated than I was thinking, but probably appropriate.
They're ahead of us.
I think this is all really good and actually kind of important that we come up with a good nomenclature. Does something really simple like park, does that know? Just no past ties, so to speak. Like here is the park site, this park project.
Well, they only, I see where you're going. I mean, to me, the only, when we say community campus in this community, everybody knows where we're talking about. So I mean, there's that piece, right? And I do completely agree that it needs a new name.
Yeah.
You know, moving forward so that it has its own identity and then there's not that negative connotation in the public. And that's just, I'm just one person, but you know, even if it's like community campus park site or site, I mean, I, I think it's fine where it's at. I'm just one person.
I, I, even just changing the word site on there for park limits it. It's not the whole site anymore. It's a piece and, and that's descriptive.
And going back to your, I think somebody brought up the, you know, kind of the key questions that people have already started asking about, what about the pool? Why are we spending money on this? The pool, the pool, the pool, you know? And so are we going to have some sort of kind of, you know, where the first boards? Kind of like just some frequently asked questions or something like that to kind of get them off the pool before they start into the whole rest of the boards.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Because they are like very frequently asked questions.
Yeah.
And it's a, it's a shortlist. And I think that's really good. And it helps.
Yeah.
Direct the conversation in a very positive way. It's not just spending too much time bringing out fires and lots of different ways of saying the same thing. Address it before, even before, you know, somebody has to ask it.
Yeah.
So that's great. So this next plan just zooms in on the site itself and we move forward through this process. This will be where we see all the proposed site improvements, some of the ones that we listed early on in the slide. Play area, the pump track, all those, those will start to show up in this. And it's more at a scale when it's printed full size board that you can start to understand the site better. I think even beyond this, there'll be zoomed in views to, to some of the more active areas of the park where more detail is required. But this starts to show the photography of the site, more specific, more specific connections to the immediate surrounding neighborhood. But in the first, so the first open house, this will just stand as a existing condition. So here are a list of guiding principles and refining these as we solicit more input. And I, I think it might be good, just if I, you know, they say, probably one of the rule, one of, one of the rules for presenting. It's not read through your own slide here, but it may be good to just read or take a moment if I read these out loud and just. Make sure that we're being marked. Create a unique park that reflects Sandy's values, unique identity and heritage. Second one is provide connectivity to Sandy River Park Trails and adjoining neighborhoods. Ensure there's safe vehicular access and ample parking for all park users. Please provide opportunities for people to interact with nature and environment. Promote community through spaces that encourage social gatherings and activities. Buy places for progressive, active recreation for all skill levels, ages and physical abilities. And lastly, create recreational opportunities for visitors that can enhance the city's economic vitality tourism. Sounds true. These sounds good guiding principles stand out, shouldn't stand out.
I'd like to add one if I could.
Sure. Yes.
Okay. I'm looking for flexibility in time. Am I blowing the thing up here with my voice? Because I'm getting a lot of feedback when I talk.
I'm trying, I'm trying to mitigate that feedback, council, but we can hear you.
Okay, I'll try to back off a little bit. I'm, I'm thinking about flexibility over time. One thing that happened is people's ideas and their. Play and recreation does change over time. And I guess I'd like to think about how we might be able to turn on some of those things for flexibility. And I, I like the idea of being able to, maybe there are some things that we haven't thought of at this time because of the nature. Maybe we just went through a pandemic. Maybe people are thinking about it and references to those. And in ten years, there's a different frame of reference. So if there is a way to make things so that we can pivot or turn or be flexible as we go through time. And one item that I'm thinking about, and I know people are going to know that's part of my. Theme song is that there may be some places for art involved in this thing that we haven't talked about yet. So if there's a way to stay flexible, stay on our toes with this park, I'd like to see us try that to provide that opportunity.
Be friendly in art.
I knew it came up.
Yeah, that's great. It's, that's a good one. We'll put some thought into that word sniffing that, just that idea that.
Integrating art isn't.
The art is not part of it. Yeah, it might be that pump tracks go out of favor, skate park, new component, those kind of things. I think we should just be thinking about if possible.
Absolutely.
Well, is there another slide later on where we'll talk about community, what that means? If we went through on the earlier slides, there's that.
Okay, so if not, hold it. Don't let me forget.
Okay.
I think.
He won't forget. Don't worry.
Any other thoughts on these guiding principles before you go to the next slide?
Just missing one word, sustainability.
Sure.
I mean, incorporating into that, I guess for me, has to do with like, not minimal maintenance, but you know. You know, sustainable maintenance. In other words, I don't want to see a bunch of grass that we just have to mow. That doesn't provide a huge amount of use for people, you know, all through the year. So, so. That, you know, whether it's some.
Low environmental impact or whatever.
Well, it's kind of more of a sustainable maintenance. And we don't, we don't.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that too, right?
It could be separate, but I almost see the sustainability going hand in hand with the flexibility over time. Like that is sustainability or sustainable. So we're not rebuilding it ten years, but considering adaptability and reusability.
Just also, you know, maintenance costs, you know, minimizing maintenance costs where possible or something like that. Or being cost effective for me.
These are all very good. This next number of pages, these just represent samples of, are very similar to the boards that we're going to have printed out. Ready at the open house. People can interact with these. And we'll have both the boards, but also have people, staff from our office and JLA, they're ready to talk to folks and answer questions that they might know. A lot of these will be interactive. So there's a question or, or a statement at the top to respond to. So you see text on the left, images on the right. So responding to either the words or the images or both. But you know, you probably participated and we use the dots to mark favorite or which we respond most to. Or it might be a piece of paper that people can fill out as they go through the different survey questions, but just really soliciting people's feedback. And in this, I, I think I've said it already, but in January's open house, we won't go with any design solutions yet. There's no options yet. It's getting everybody up to speed on the same page. Here's the site. Tell us how you want this to feel, for instance. So this one just speaks to all the different amenities, ranking them from most important to least important. So they could all show up. It's just what we hope to see is with the responses to this, there's, there's a common theme of certain amenities that rise to the top.
So, go to, no, you go. So there are certain kinds of attributes that, that we talked about earlier in terms of accessibility. For everybody, all ages and so forth. And when you start looking at those soft things like save, ADA so forth. If you put them in the order of this ranking, it becomes kind of weird to not rank them high. So are we just going to leave them off and just assume those are absolute requirements? As opposed to running through the ranking?
I think if it's maybe to answer your question, if it's to the level of a guiding principle, it just is embedded in the project.
Okay.
Whatever amenity, it goes through that filter. Is this safe? Is this accessible? Then it's, it's a given.
Thank you.
And one thing to add to that today too, when we had a conversation with American Ramp Company and then we had a series of individuals on the line that were. Focus groups for skate parks and a pump track that definitely rose to the top with its theme all the way through. As far as having it be accessible, all levels, all skill abilities. So yeah, that's definitely a guiding principle.
And then, not to really backtrack, but so part of this park buffer is obviously a neighborhood, right? You've got mining and that scenic. And so as part of the design, and I realize I'm jumping forward a little bit. But are we going to be talking with that neighborhood as far as some of the design? Because like, I'll speak for myself, I wouldn't necessarily want a skate park right next to my house.
Yeah.
You know, so as far as moving forward and once we get into that moment.
Right, there's that proximity there.
Yep.
That there's a few neighbors that are right beside the park.
Yep.
We're sending direct mailers out to the proximity to that park. So they definitely are getting it hopefully through social media, but also in the mail.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
So none of these are just ideas of a theme here, just another sheet, another board that we would put out where people can respond. How do you want to relax in the park? It's giving a lot of different feelings and images to respond to. The idea that there's coming out of this, there would be a common theme among people attending.
This, this really speaks to, because it's kind of an addition, this really speaks to my vision of that part as I enter an older demographic. You know, as opposed to riding my bike on pump track or something, or my skateboard. It's been a long time.
I thought we were going to get you a scooter.
I'll speak up and say, you know, there's the trails that we're building from this park over to the other one, plus the. Plus the trails that we already have in there, create a lot of the. Opportunities that I see on these pictures. And I also see a lot of grass to mow on some of these pictures. And, and I see opportunities that we already have in most of our other parks as far as big, large grassy areas to sit on a bench, lay on the grass, have a picnic. I know that, but I just wanna kind of, you know, I get, I get that this is where we're going, but I also wanna, you know, focus on. You know, activities.
Absolutely.
And that's coming.
Absolutely.
Well, I'm kind of in the same mode that Paul is. I fortunately have entered the old age category. And I think if we're talking about a mix of uses and peoples that lounging and observation, watching those kind of things certainly should be involved. But I suspect that will show up in the public meetings and all, but I don't want to let that one go unenforced or unemphasized here.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
I'll speak up for a teenager though. I think there also needs to be a targeted focus on what preteens and teens want.
Yes.
In a park as a parent of four daughters who are all adults now, I didn't have a place to take them. And they need a place.
Yeah.
People, parents have that have aging or kids growing, they need a place to take them.
Want a place to bring the grandkids, but I still wanna be able to sit down a little far off and, you know. We want it all, right?
I'm mutually exclusive.
Right. That's what I was just gonna say.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask one question that you may cover later, but what about lighting? Cause I think about more than just daytime access from the park. Is there a lighting plan for the park? Or is that something to be determined?
Absolutely. There, there will be. Yeah. And that's something that will be discussing this group as well, just, you know. Part by policy, some jurisdictions have, you know, certain requirements that have to be. Park on that, and that's more of a soft.
Maybe going all the way back to the guiding principles is a year round usable. Because, you know, it's dark at four o'clock, park's not closing till 10:00. So that pulls in the sufficient lighting to make it usable until for all hours.
I'm sure the community around it doesn't want it glowing. It's just, there's a lot of big spaces. Is there, is there a place for, for early evening use?
Yeah.
Shouldn't come creating the light in certain parts of the park.
I don't want to labor it too much, cause I know this is gonna come up in lots of different ways. But one of the things that has been heavy on my input from people that I know of this is on the skate park has been security, being able to manage that park. And this is a relatively large park with a lot of elevational differences, places for people to get lost in the mix. And so security would certainly want to be, and maybe this is part of that lighting or. Accessibility part two.
There it goes. Ben, just to note on this slide, refining as we go and presenting this to different groups. And one decent feedback that we've been hearing is, you know, there's already a number of amphitheaters and large public shelters in Sandy itself. We don't need to recreate that necessarily in this park. So we've toned it down. Maybe there's smaller gathering places as opposed to one central.
So, so this is a lot closer to, cause I brought up that in my first meeting. Cause, cause I think we're all united on that, but. And you've added more of those intimate spaces and things. But what I would like to see on here is a, as a something to spark people would be an individual family size covered shelter. You know, so there, somebody's got a birthday party with 10 kids. It's not a reserved thing. It's not this giant shelter, but it's just first come, first served kind of shelters. I'd like to see that as a, as a picture prompt for people to consider in addition to.
Yeah.
These kinds of things that you have.
I think what we'll find also is that, you know, having, you know, like those small shelters that are for smaller groups, but located in a way that, you know, parents can kind of keep an eye on, you know, the playground and the pump track. And, you know, what nature play area or whatever it is all at once. So kind of centralized.
Yeah.
Gathering spaces that are visible.
I think with the list of amenities that are proposed, proximities of those amenities are gonna be, it's gonna be an important thing to consider. What's by what and what's not by what.
Thank you for the changes you made.
Yeah, yeah. And there's still time to make another one for the open house. This question dealing with nature, maybe vegetation, what, what image do you result, what is it resonates most with you?
Would it be appropriate to put art as one of those options? I know it's not true.
The point, I, I was gonna bring that up, Don.
I beat you.
Yeah, within this slide, more of an artistic expression of nature.
Some statues.
Yeah, we're thinking of contributions from artists and such.
Yeah.
And I think for me, kind of nature play, especially water, and if you've seen that Westmoreland.
Yeah.
Place. Yeah, that's just the nitty dog of playgrounds for some of the grandkids that I know. You know, they hang out there for two and a half hours. And so having that. Nature integrated play is really helpful.
So I think that's using natural landscape. You're gonna create trails you use with the existing, you know, agricultural features that are there. And, you know, wind through the trees down by the river, but not have to create new pieces. Just use the existing landscape as the, as the nature.
I don't, I don't know the part we're referring to, but we were in Bend and saw a couple of parks where, you know, the trees or even brought in logs and things have been set.
For the way.
Right. And I thought that was brilliant, cause. Still went back then, it's part of our culture here.
Hey, yeah. What's great about this site with an idea like that, it's just. Imagine blending with right from the forest to the park. Where's the difference? Where's the edge of it? It's, you know, very blurred and very fitting, I think. So I think the upper left image is part of that part.
Yeah.
And this gets into more of the active part of it, obviously. Playing in the park is different, different, it's not that any of them, it could be some burn of all of them, but together with. There's a one that rises top. We put a big slide like that in, cause I'll be at that park every day.
Forget the trail down to the river.
Was there before?
Yes, I do actually. Yeah, that was part of the school district. We are fine. The last two slides are more specific to the skate park and the pump track. And I believe Maddie is on that line.
True. She is, yeah.
Great. I'm gonna turn over to Maddie and she can speak to these two slides.
She's getting. Set up.
Maddie, are you, are you able to unmute yourself? And just as she's setting up, I'll just introduce Maddie's with the American Ramp Company. And they are, it's all part of the same park development, but they're really the experts on the pump track, skate park. They do this all day long. So it's really a pleasure to be working with them just to get their expertise on this.
And I can chime in a little bit more too. They are in the process of creating a specific survey that will talk about, you know, different types of amenities. What do they want the skate park to look like? The pump track? Again, we had a meeting today to, for a meet and greet with community, community members about the skate park. It's definitely a language that I don't talk as far as like, so I'm glad we brought in some experts as far as rail skating versus street skating.
Who all was there?
This afternoon, it was Chris Hargreaves, Mike Shearer, Mike Kays with DBK Skate. He owns the skate shop. That's a great question. Few more people, quite a bit more people. Scott Minty, Minton?
Cody Fisher was either.
Cody Fisher was not there. No, but if there's a suggestion like with pack, please absolutely send those names. But, uh, yep, yep, it was about nine people on the call.
I, I like the diversity of your folks looking at it from the expert size. I'm not mad because to having one person become kind of the, the force pushing things along. So I like lots of voices.
And Maddie apologizes her computer froze.
It does happen. Technology only works when it works.
I met her before we met the other day, but I was impressed by. The material and enthusiasm for it. It's like.
One of the things that might be helpful at the meeting is, you know, what I've heard from a lot, a lot of people, including sitting up here. You know, what is a pump track? And having a video on a little laptop meeting. Cause a picture of video tells a thousand words. It just, it's so much fun and showing that kind of, I've got a bunch of videos. You know, multiple ages, you know, from little kids to adults doing it.
Especially the little kid ones. That was I opened the pen and bent a lot of the rules, you know. Early on, like, going around.
I like.
We have a bunch of that. I think we have Maddie now.
Yes. Hello. Sorry. Computers never work when you need them to. Um, yeah, so just kind of high level, Rochelle mentioned, today we had our first skate park review committee, just introductory call. Sandy is very blessed to have so many amazing skaters in the area. And they've been very generous to contribute their time and, and just really make sure that the community gets the best part. So we're, we're very lucky to have them on board and very thankful for the opportunity to work with them. So kind of based on the conversations we had with them today, this board will change. We are working on updating that, so it will be updated by tomorrow. And I will make sure Rochelle gets those, so she can share them with you guys. But yeah, I think she was mentioning, you know, inclusive and beginner friendly. All of those themes rose to the top today and, and we're excited to provide a park that, that offers that. I think we talked briefly, or I've shared with some of you, you know, in Port Angeles, Washington, we recently did an, on an adaptive use pump track. And we worked with the adaptive use riders to make sure it was compatible for them. In the past, we've worked with, his name is Aaron Fotheringham. You might know him as Wheels. He was on America's Got Talent. He tours with Nitro Circus. So he's actually a wheelchair action sports enthusiast. So he does these mega ramps and flips and all sorts of crazy things in his wheelchair. But we actually worked with him on a project in Las Vegas. And he kind of helped us come up with some ramps and some adaptive use skate, skate obstacles. So we have a bunch of people we can call on if, if we want to include specific features that are all inclusive. So really excited about that. Were there any specific questions you guys had about the skate park or the pump track?
What were the key kind of points that the group made to you today?
Yeah, absolutely. I think we really kind of talked about the style of skate park that, that these skaters in particular enjoy. So we call it moonscape. It's very transitional. So you'll think of, you know, bowls and areas that you can flow through. So that's good to know, because some, some communities want more of a street style, which you'll see that photo here. So a, a street style would be, right, anything you find on the street. So that would be a bench or a ledge or a rail. So it's, it's interesting. Skating when it started was very transitional, the, the big bowls, right? People were going into pools and backyards. But as skating has evolved, it seems the youth is kind of leaning more towards the street style. You know, that's kind of what you're seeing in the Olympics and X Games. So we want to make sure we have a nice blend of both options, but we don't want one to overpower the other. So that, that was a good takeaway. And I, I think just hearing their, their heart for, for kids and getting people involved in the sport of skating and making sure that there's features that kids can learn on. And so it's not just super intimidating and, and hard for them to, to get involved. So we, we've got some cool options and ways to tie the skate park and trail, you know, paths to get to different facilities. So it, it'll be a really fun process the next couple of months working with them.
This has any.
And then again.
Has anybody brought up bike skills routes kind of around the pump track or, or anything like that?
Not that I have heard. However, we haven't, you know, opened up our online survey yet. So we do kind of have some open ended questions asking, you know, what else would you like to see in a bike park? There's some questions that allude to, you know, would you like a jump line? Or, you know, a facility that can offer more progressive jump features? But I haven't had any direct conversations about a specific skills course or bicycle playground or anything to that nature.
As that, because that's one of, when you talk about your tourism and economic development, having those kind of facilities are kind of a big draw for. A community.
So here's a thought. We could make this pump track and skate park for the elite and the expert. Or we can make this pump track and skate park for the early age bunny trails. Sorry, my skeen is getting involved here. And I wonder if we should evaluate what would be the most effective and how we can garner the most from our citizens and maybe even from those around our city that that would appeal to the best. Maybe there's always the mix that seems to come up, but I just wonder if there's a conversation about that yet, or is that to come?
Well, yeah, absolutely. That, that's a great point. And I think something that we try to do in every park we design is, is we don't want one to overpower the others. So we don't want a super advanced park and we don't want just a beginner friendly park. So we're always designing with progression in mind. So it's a progressive parks is how we refer to them. So there will be, you know, maybe the, the ramp that's two foot tall in one section. But then next to it, there's a three foot tall ramp and a, and a four foot tall. So as kids or beginners start to learn, they have obstacles that they can progress on. So ideally, that's what we want to see in a park is, is stations or features that every level can start on and then progress up to the more challenging.
One of the things we have up on the mountain is a bunch of skiers. And I know when they're not skiing, they're state boarding or probably pump tracking, I suppose. And I just wonder if that's something we've added to the list of things that are possibilities. We've thought about tourism in terms of connecting with those kind of users.
And Maddie, do you want to talk a little bit about the branding opportunities that your company is helping us out with? And it goes to councillor Hokinson was talking earlier about like a naming of the park. And so do you mind speaking a little bit to that?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. So American Ramp Company, we have a branding division in-house called Spoke and Wheel. And I will send you guys a link to their website. They have some fun videos. And there's a video from that Port Angeles project up in Washington. But essentially we have a team of, of marketing experts who are gonna help. And it's included in your guys' what we're doing for you guys. It's a branding package. So we want to help you come up with the park name. We want to help you come up with a logo for the park, you know, colors, create those Instagram worthy moments, so to speak. We want to give you everything you need that when this park is done, you can market it to the world. And we want the users to, to find really cool and unique features, whether that's incorporating a cool piece of artwork. Or that, you know, I, we say Instagram worthy, but that's the age we're living in, right? So we want the word to spread out digitally. So when people come visit your park, they're taking that photo, they're tagging it, they're sharing it with their friends. And then all of a sudden you have this regional park that when people are driving through the area, hey, I've seen that on social media. We need to go check out that park. So we, we want to help give you the tools to do that with this park when it's done.
Thank you, Maddie. We've got just a few minutes. We've gotten some really good feedback tonight. Any other comments? Do we touch on what you were hoping to about your community?
We did.
Good. Let that slide.
I just have one more question that I wrote down. It goes back to the very first, when you first started talking, it's about public houses again. Other than on our, on our website, what other modes of advertisement are you for, to let the community know that those public houses are very?
Yeah. So there's several routes. So we're actually, we're, we're gonna utilize Sandy Speaks, which is. Jeff can probably. Jeff can probably chime in a little bit more about that, but it's our city engagement tool with the community. We did a social media post on Friday that actually received quite a bit of traction.
More specific social media posts means Facebook means Instagram means.
Well, this initial one was just on Facebook, but we'll be pushing out to our other channels as well. Certainly Instagram, certainly next door. Yeah, I mean, that, that was honestly kind of, it was almost a safe date, kind of like prime the pump, tend the thing. We're going to be pushing out information later this week about the launch of the online server. Just, just the first of many.
Direct mailers and they'll be, we're looking into advertising through Pamplin Media as well for some of their virtuals. So when you go into Sandy Post and you're reading that online, there's ticklers that will crawl across the screen. So we're exploring those options and just as we're doing some tabling events as a staff. And so tomorrow we're hosting oh, what's it called here? It's not good morning Sandy. It's the morning perk. Thank you. Through the chamber. So we're hosting that event. So we'll talk about it there and then we'll have tables that will pop up throughout the community. So we're looking at potentially having some information at the library, ant farm.
School.
It's the school. Yes. Yep. Mountain Storm. Actually they're doing pictures this weekend and they'll have about 200 kids and then families roll through the center. So we're going to just hand everybody a flyer and if they won't take it, we'll put it on a red shield. So we will get the word out there. Yep. So.
I was going to ask about the schools too. I thought that was critical for.
I think for me, you know, having been involved pretty intimately with the Parks and Trails Master Plan, you know, the need that we have, like, like like she said, there's abilities to create, you know, beginners and intermediate and advanced and stuff. What I see again in our parks across town is this lacking of teen space of kind of more, you know, the bigger slides that you're not going to put your three year old down. So really having that opportunity to kind of create a playground space for older kids is really, and that's really important, but also then what also I've heard is the inclusive play structures and having some space for them to have those adaptable accessible play structures and stuff. So those are the two, as far as the playground stuff, it's really missing in town. And this would be a great place to fill that need. So.
And we've got, there are individuals who are on the current parks board who, those are their primary areas of focus. So I think, I think we've got a really good mix on the parks board and all of those things will definitely be addressed.
I was just going to ask in the open houses, like when we did the complaint, we, we engaged the high school and that specifically did one there. Is that, is that a possibility?
We could look at opportunities to go to different areas and have those direct conversations. And I, I believe that something in JLA has been having conversations about us reaching out to focus groups and so absolutely.
E Club might be able to help you put that together. They're affiliated with the Kuanis. And the Kuanis group is, is also kind of taken a, you know, they're, they fund playgrounds around the country. That's been one of their feature projects that they do for different towns. So.
One of the things that comes to mind is, as we look at this thing as a regional park, something that draws quite a number of folks both in and outside our city. I'm wondering about the ability to maintain, take care of things that are I suspect sometime we're going to have vandalism. I suspect somehow we're going to have a lot of use. I just want to make sure that as a city council, we have a somehow a strategy in mind to deal with those kinds of, of high level uses. And I'm, I'm sure you are thinking about it in terms of your planning, but being able to harden off the system, so harden off the, the part, I mean, so that it does handle some of the high level uses that we expect to use. My, my guess is if we bring in a regional idea like this, that you're going to find people wanting to come in and, and push it to the edge. And so I think we need to be careful about finding those financial strategies to make sure we keep the park in a, in a appropriate maintenance.
You spoke in wheel tax, Carl?
Yeah, I think he's going down the, the path of a, of a parks district. I think, I think that's where we're going.
Longer term. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but it's something to think about. This is, this will be one of those places where we will draw a lot of people in and see it. Getting all that kind of use.
I think glory to that point, if this is developed out successful, you have a much maybe a better story to add on and bring those other things. I mean, we still have ball fields and, and other things into that.
But it's a, it's a starting point. It's a starting point.
Yeah, better than a couple empty buildings.
I agree.
And I could see community members taking on friends of kind of act events, friends of the skate park, friends of the pump park, friends of the historically old people's part of the park, all that. I'll sponsor that one.
Maybe some partnerships. Maybe some community partnerships that are unique.
I think that's, I think that's really important. We saw that in band where certain parks were developed by and paid for privately through entities. Or maybe it's just advertising, but let's not, what we don't do, I don't think a really good job of is supporting or encouraging these foundations to just support, you know, but not just buy a brick, but help build an endowment.
And I think that original answer, that question about the pool at the meetings and stuff. Part of the answer to that is kind of that this is kind of the, you know, step one of kind of developing something bigger and stuff. Because it's not a either or, it's kind of like, first we're doing this and the stepping stone.
Yeah, doesn't rule out development to the south.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what I thought is here. Get this done. You know, something like that. You have a nice, it's a nice stepping stone to what could be next.
I wouldn't touch the pool. I wouldn't. It is the second, the second that you make that part of the discussion, it will become part of the discussion. So.
Well, it's part of the, I mean, that's what they keep asking.
Well, but that's, that's why we focus. I feel like we need to focus on this project and not get wishy washy on what are, what we're doing here. We're working on the park and that's what we're working on.
Your idea about putting it right up front as you're coming in.
Yep. I thought that was a very short answer.
Sorry, that's not what we're talking about.
Otherwise that becomes the focus and I don't know why. Let's focus what we're doing. It's really important. This is a big project for us and yeah, super excited about it.
We are too. Very excited.
Agreed.
Thank you, everybody, for your time this evening. It's been very helpful.
Do I get to adjourn?
Yeah. Do you want to have a short?
Yeah, we'll do, what do you think? Seven oh five? Give a little break, have a little break. All right. We will adjourn the work session and we'll reconvene the council meeting at seven oh five. All right. Thank you, Maddie. Thank you so much. All right. I will call the city council meeting to order at seven oh five. Uh, all right, Jeff, could you do a roll call please?
Yes, councillor Maiden.
Present.
And then we'll move to councillor Sheldon here. Councillor Walker.
Here.
Councillor Exner.
President.
Councillor Hokinson, here. And council president Smallwood.
I'm here. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay. Jeff, is there any public comment?
No, we had no signups for public comment.
Okay. Moving along, how about response to previous public comments?
No public comments.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. We can accept the consent agenda. I'll sign it.
Okay. Motion to accept and by councillor Sheldon, second by councillor Maiden. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? Nay? All right, accepted. Uh, so we're going to move into a public hearing for the ordinance. And I suppose now is when I need to read the All right, straight off the script. Here we go. So first note to the audience, there'll be an opportunity to offer public testimony after the conclusion of the staff report. So I would like to open public hearing and I will call for any abstentions from the hearing body. Hearing none, I'll call for conflicts of interest. Okay. And I will call for the staff report from Kelly.
Thank you councillor Smallwood. Let me see here, let me show my screen. Let's put all these things in the second here. Industrial. Problem is with all this stuff now, there's like five things that pop up.
We can see it.
It's very hard. Okay. So this is the industrial design standards. Hearing, it's legislative, just like the next one you're going to be hearing tonight. So they're both code amendments that are being proposed. So I'll just kind of start with this one. And then after we go through this and go through the public comments, then you'll see a very similar slideshow, but it'll be for the cell storage code amendment. So I'll be coming right after. So as I said, it is a legislative hearing to adopt ordinance twenty twenty three oh one. We did provide all the legal notice requirements in it. In addition now to the city Facebook page, which is part of the development code. There was a public hearing that occurred at the planning commission on September twenty sixth. The commission did have a few small edits to the code language. I worked with the commission chair Crosby to do those edits and then make sure that they were, they captured what the commission wanted changed. And so we went through that. Took a little bit of back and forth. Just because of all the other council items, the last few months, we decided to delay this until January, just not to rush it on to the agenda. It is only affecting one code chapter seventeen ninety within title seventeen. And more specifically, just one section actually within that code chapter. So it's, it's not like a typical one that you see like the next one tonight, that it's a bunch of different coach sections or code chapters and changes. It's very specific, just a one code section on this one. So one of the main reasons is in my tenure of working here for over a decade, there's always been what I would, what I would claim to be an unnecessary burden of building design, especially in the I two zoning district. This is a zoning district that is where kind of your typically your highest paying jobs are, but they're usually more industrial in nature, like warehousing, distribution, manufacturing. And typically these kinds of uses are in very simple buildings that are metal prefab, usually pretty rectangular. And usually a lot of times, if you talk to David, who was here earlier and other people that do business recruitment or economic development, a lot of these sorts of businesses or uses go around to different cities and they kind of determine location based on the skilled labor force within those cities. But they also base it on land availability and how expensive is to build these structures. Because they are looking usually for very simple structures. They typically do not want to locate in something that's going to require something as robust as Sandy's style. So the, the code changes that are being proposed tonight are really only affecting the I two zone. In the future, they will also, if you adopt it, affect the I three zone. Currently there's no I three zoned land in city limits. There is some in the UGB to the northwest of town out by Gerald Road. But so right now, if any of that land was annexed, then like say, once the moratorium's lifted, there is no guiding principles for how that land's developed. As far as design of buildings, design of sites. So I, I think it's prudent to adopt something into the code. And I think it would make sense to have it be similar or the same as the I two zoning district.
Kelly, can you throw up that map?
Yeah, I was going to in a minute here. In, in addition to what I would claim is some overburden, some design requirements in the current seventeen ninety one thirty. In two thousand twelve, about a year after I started here, we adopted ordinance two thousand twelve oh five, which makes a requirement for additional screening standards around in I two zone sites. This was already being kind of done in a few cases, as councillor Walker was talking to me before the meeting started here, it was being done along highway twenty six for that old industrial area. So that was kind of ahead of its time. I don't know how the city made them do that at the time, but it was, and it thankfully was because I, that really shields a lot of those industrial use back there from our highway. More recently, the city worked with, I think Fred Meyer in the early two thousands to kind of put a robust screening behind that. So you don't see a lot of their delivery area. And while that is not in the I two zoning district, it's kind of the same concept. You'll see it in a few slides here. And then the final point is we really want to attract industrial businesses, as I said earlier. I can share that. I can share that on a map. That's a good idea. And if I would have thought of that, I would have put it in the slideshow. Can you guys?
Did you share your entire screen or just PowerPoint?
Share screen. So councillor Walker suggested bringing this up. It was a very good suggestion. We will not let me share. So okay, so what we're talking about here are the purple areas. The darker purple areas are the I two zoning district. That is the only I two areas in city limits currently. And then eventually, so that just to kind of orient everybody, this is kind of a hole that you see down into, this is where Safeway is. And then this industrial way through sixty seconds. This is where Pinellas Construction is getting a remark. So this picture and a few slides is looking actually right down here. And then eventually when we do some more annexations in the future, the area that's on I three currently is to the northwest of town there and it's currently in our UGB, but outside of city limits. So that, that's the area. Yeah. It does look like there's actually one property that's on the I three that is in the current city limits. So I might have misspoke about that. Yeah, I'll have to double check to make that sure that's accurate. Did you have any other questions councillor Walker about the map?
No, I just, you know, it, it, it just made a difference for me personally about having it be kind of, you know, the entrance to our town and ride along highway twenty six and the visibility of all this. And yeah, I kind of understand and support the idea of it, but the you know, the visit, what our town looks like after this is all implemented would have a bearing, I think, on our sex, success of our economic development too.
And so I'll, I'll keep this actually on up here because I think we might want to refer back to the zoning back on the next item as well. It's actually a really good idea. Go back to the slideshow here. Okay. So so this is looking west on industrial way. The, the side of the picture is actually to the back of Fred Meyer. And the other side is where there's some other industrial businesses along the south side of industrial way. So this is, this is what the code is actually since two thousand twelve has been wanting and desiring. And this is, this is a big reason for why I think we can lessen the burden on the industrial design of the site design and the building design behind these screened areas. Councillor Walker also did mention to me, which is also a good point, is that we do see tree blowdown from time to time, especially during big winter storm events like we saw recently. So it, it is a really good point. I think that you know, as that occurs, it would, it would be a code enforcement action to have them replant. And it does take some time for the trees to regrow. I will acknowledge that. Some of the trees to the south side of industrial way you drive there were planted about right when I started working here. So it took about ten or eleven years. This picture, I think it's just from three or four months ago. So it does, it does take some time for it to grow back. Uh, just a few examples of some code amendments and some changes. Roof slope is actually the biggest one that I get questions about. I was told by several different builders and different engine structural engineers that from going from a one twelve roof pitch to a three twelve roof pitch typically doubles the cost of the roof. So if you think about for attracting industrial uses, just a simple thing like that, if we could just cut the costs and make it more attractive. And honestly, you're not going to see that much of the difference from a three twelve and a one twelve. And we've had a few buildings going on US metals and elsewhere that actually went for variances for this very reason, same cost, and they were all approved by the planning commission. With a recommendation of approval from staff, so. Another one is the requirement to incorporate things like arcades, awnings. Porches, alcoves, porticos, and the the idea is really good here. It's to protect pedestrians from the rain and sun. However, I'm not that familiar of a lot of codes around the state that would do this for industrial buildings. This would be typically more for places where they're shopping or retail or schools even. So this, this seems like an overly burdensome requirement, so we're just, for example, we're just removing, proposing to remove it altogether. Another one, which is, this is just another example of something we're proposing. So the articulation is right now three. Sentences long on how you need to meet articulation on a new building. We're not proposing to remove it entirely, but we're looking to simplify language like this. The reason why I put the and is because if you look through seventeen ninety-one thirty, you actually have to go to two different sections within that, two different subsections to actually find the two different articulation requirements. So it's just like, it's not, it's not written for very easy use for people that are looking to develop when they're looking at cost estimation. And then I think just kind of simplifying it and saying something like, buildings must include, you know, this percentage of articulation on. Facing public streets or residential. This is kind of the innies and outies of the building. Yeah.
Is it okay to ask a question? The things like, I'm trying to think like on that I, is it I two, the I two current area, we've got like the. Archery place, not arch, axe throwing place, access, we have the. Crossfit, we have, you know, whipper snappers and things like that. We have kind of more commercial places in these zones. And so when we have those things, you know, those, it's nice to have the pedestrian, you know, entranceway, they, you know. Facade, alcoves, porches, roofs, what, porticos, whatever, awnings on those buildings, we do require them in the. When they're in the commercial zone, so how do you. Work around that kind of deal when you have those kind of commercial uses being built or, you know, converted in. I two.
Yeah, so that that property in particular, and it actually extends all the way down to the south where Bill's Automotive is as well. That particular property got approval from the council, I think in two thousand seventeen or maybe sixteen. It was sixteen. To be converted to I one, once the buildings are all redesigned. As you've kind of seen, they've kind of been slowly transforming, I think in two thousand twenty or twenty-one, I think a few. Maybe only Lori, I know Carl was on here as well. He he got a five-year extension to that, so I think they have until twenty-five or twenty-six to get it all done. He, Mr. Maiden is moving forward on all of it. It's just kind of going slowly. So that is a really good point. That will eventually be I one. And I one is like where the movie theater is. It's the exact same design and uses as our C two zoning district. So that one, that one's a little unique in that that property.
So you wouldn't allow commercial uses in I two going forward?
They have to be subordinate to the main use, and they have, I would have to reference the code, but it's in a chapter seventeen fifty. Seventeen fifty-two, I think. That's where it talks about the uses, like you can have like a retail section of a manufacturing business, but it'd probably be a certain percentage of the building, something like that. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to have a restaurant or like an axor in place for whipper snappers in a traditional I two song.
Okay, that's kind of my question, because I just kind of think those features are good to have on those businesses.
Hundred percent agree.
I I might add a little bit of history here. And that, when I was back on Planning Commission, a number of those buildings were actually very much required, not hard, but very much advocated for. And we use some of the variances to be able to to put some of that kind of use and. Commercialness to the L one and L two. I think that's really a piece that's really a conflict conflict with what we have. We have an industrial zone. That is one of those things that has a lot of character of commercial. I don't forget what years it was, but it was in the late teens probably, where we said we would look at. See one land and I one land as a kind of a blending because of the need for. Putting some of the industrial uses in our commercial assembly and that kind of stuff, things that could be easily. Compatible with the commercial side, and then the same thing with industrial and I one be able to make some of those commercial. Things that were on the edge of industrial and. And quite frankly, commercial uses were a big pressure at one time. And my suspicion is, is industrial uses not nearly as. Needed as much as commercial land, but as cheap ground, cheap buildings, and a lot of that is the reasons for some of these. Variances and some of these code things. I I will say, though, that when we put this together, we did make a kind of a jumble and a quite an unnecessary amount of. Code statements that made it very difficult to figure out, heard that from many people. As they were trying to build properties in his I one land, so very appropriate to make this stuff clean and succinct, so thank you for that.
I I will add one other thing, Council Walker, on page seventy-one of your packet, it's in E. Three. We are still retaining that pedestrian entries shall be sheltered with an overhang or portico with at least five feet, so even. Even for more traditional uses, at least for the main entryways for employees, or if they do have a delivery man or something, there will still be some rain coverage.
I just want to know, this is, this is Kelly's staff reports, and we'll have time for discussion here shortly, so.
We can ask you more questions.
Let's let him get through his report.
As I said, the the planning commission did not have many changes. I have read, received no public comments on this. We published it, like I said, on Facebook, we put it in the newspaper. I led all the developers and main builders in town know about it. I did have. And two architects, I believe, and a few other people that work with us a lot, just take a look at what we proposed, and they actually had a few really good points from like. When they read it, just to like make it more clear. But really, nobody's been. I haven't heard one person in opposition to these changes yet. This one, thank you, aware that. And with that, the planning mission and staff are recommending you to approve the code amendments and pass the ordinance.
All right. I'll move on to public testimony. So the guidelines for those wishing to speak, please try and avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of the previous speaker, even if that is all you have to say. If you have a document, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to the city recorder. At C I dot sandy dot O R dot U S and staff will make sure that your evidence is properly processed. To offer public testimony, for those joining us in person. Please raise your hand to indicate you would like to speak. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone dial nine, to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will call on each person when it is their time to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify. The city recorder will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. City Council rules require each person to state their name and address for the record. I will call for testimony on the proposed, proposed ordinance.
Yes.
One thing I forgot to mention.
Yes.
I'm not sure if I have to or not, but I was a part of the planning commission that worked on these codes in September of two thousand twenty-two.
Perfect. So I guess you would have been, yeah.
Okay, Council President Smallwood, I'll just look for any raised hands. Looking online. And I do not see any raised.
All right, fair enough. So I will call for a staff recap and a recommendation from Kelly.
To approve the ordinance, please.
Very good. So now I'd like to call, call for a motion to close the public hearing at twenty-seven or at seven twenty-six.
Make a motion, close.
All right, we have a motion by Councilor Sheldon and a second by Council Maiden, all those in favor. Call for discussion by the hearing body. Now is your opportunity. Just have one silly question. I think I know the answer is one. These are not subject to clear and objective standards.
That is correct, Counselor, because they're not for housing applications. That's, that is, that is correct. And actually, the planning commission asked the same thing.
I don't have a question, because I was part of it, but I do would like to make a short statement. On this position, I would, I would ask you to listen, talk to David, if you haven't read his letter, he was a planning commission. This is an important move, I believe, to attract businesses in the sand that we haven't had before. And it would be a big boost to developers, because it would lower some of their infrastructure costs when they come in, and because our design standards are too burdensome to. Complicate of our own, so it's really a simple case in my eyes. Draw more business, which would generate, generate more revenue.
I did hear one comment from my sources, and I I think it's something that some of the public have said a few times. So in the. The corrections, and I believe it's in F where the windows are all talked about. Are we going to make sure we don't have any more fake windows that people can see and make them look so obvious that it's. Laughable.
Well, I was, that was a question that sounded like.
Yeah, so.
Are fake windows approvable or are they?
That would have to be addressed when we do the clear and objective audit. The Sandy style will be brought into that, and so we can address that at this point. How I would interpret this section is how it's currently written. It's not requiring any percentage of windows, but it's saying when the windows. Are installed, they shall be located in a manner that enables tenants, employees, and police to watch over pedestrian parking. And loading areas, so I think you would have to interpret that to mean that they're clear, that you can see through them. I think your other question about like tractor supply and different buildings like that, that that would be, had to be covered under a different code, code modification.
We have a couple of questions and points. First of all. Parts of this are probably long overdue, and I was advocating for the high school years ago. I mean, this was a highly contentious. Point for the cost of high school trying to meet all the the design criteria. So there are pieces of this that we need to address. That said. The. Allowing what we've allowed to mold into I two zones today, where we have mixed-use facilities that. Probably should have never been allowed, in my opinion, maybe in, as it was owned. We've had, we've set a precedent now for very friendly-looking buildings and I two, and those lots that are next to those very friendly buildings will suddenly be subject to a very. A much less friendly-looking. Style, and I think that's problematic if I look at the space, you know, around. The old Smoky Hearth, you know, where I used to spend a lot of my time. Some of those development, if they, it'd be different, and the new standard says they could be steel metal buildings.
So can I address that? The Smoky Hearth buildings are I one.
Yeah, I'm talking about the the purple next to it, so we've got I one, but we've got the purple on the other side of the street.
Are you talking about the ones across from the primary gas station?
Yes, across from the the corner Champion Way and then that whole block along the industrial. So, for example, I don't know if it's still there, but years ago, there was a brewery there that was essentially a front for a group pub. That's one of the, to me, that was an example of something that didn't really fit what I think the code was designed for in that space.
So that building, just keep in mind that that building was built pre-two thousand twelve, when we required I two zone sites to have. The vegetative screen. So now, if that was today, under this code, proposed code, it would have to have a vegetative screen, and yes, the bones could be more simple.
So that's, that's one point. I'm, so I, I'm not sure I'm comfortable rolling back everything. Roof slopes, yeah, I'm I'm okay with that. The second point really has to do with the next subject, which is, should we allow. Storage units. Hang on, okay, and the reason for that is because it's permitted use under I two. Which means a storage unit, if we were to adopt that change. Would be subject to these reduced standards. Like an industrial building, as opposed to the storage unit that we just put in with its own more rigorous set of standards. Is that correct?
Again, that, that's in a different zone, though, and that does not have a screening requirement. The one that was just installed, Sandy, what is it called, free up story?
So I guess let me clarify the question. Under the, if we were to adopt this one, and supposing we were to adopt the next ordinance. We could have a storage unit in I two, under the new reduced standards, is that correct?
And that was at the recommendation of the Economic Development Committee, yes.
Completely screened.
Yeah, completely screened.
Which this, and the screening piece is, it's for me is the crux piece, right, because that building is going to be behind vegetation, and you're not going to be able to see it from the street view. And so then, to me, I, you know, I agree, I think this is, I think these are necessary changes to get some. Industrial businesses in this town. At a lower cost to the developer.
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I do too.
You know, different buildings, side by side, right?
Right.
But these have trees in front of them, completely covered.
Yeah. Now, they do.
That's, that's the word now, or in five years after they're built.
Right, but it it is different zoning, right, and so you can't, in my mind anyway, I can't. Hold this building to this building, to this zoning code, because they're in a different. In a different zone, so.
You're right, but. Previous councils invested political capital to create the code we have. And if we remove it, it would take tremendous capital, put it back. As opposed to relax it a little bit. It's easy to relax. So I I think, I don't know, I'm concerned, I think. Not sure I support this as broad as it is right now.
Yeah, Catherine. Um, can you put the zoning map back up there, please? I understand and support the ability to relax some of the considerations in the. Industrial zoning of I two and I three. What concerns me, though, is that. That big light purple blob there out on the left side of town, on the west side of town is. That's all black ground there right across from the space age fuel spot. That's all, you know, it's all just a big field, it's all visible. And it concerns me. That, that's basically the entrance to our town, you know, now, I mean, it's a big, it's a first development now. And so having that be. Subject to to such a relaxed standard when it's so visible, I wouldn't mind if it was, you know, and and this is kind of like changing the zoning thing, which is outside the scope of this. Issue, but. But applying those relaxed standards to such a visible part of the entrance to our town. Is really scary, and when we talk about screening, I I just, you know, I mean, trees take decades to get tall, I mean, so. And, you know, in decades is a long time when you're waiting for something to look better or to hide something that's ugly. So I just, I'm a little bit nervous about, like I said, I really support it when the stuff is not really visible to our main. Entrance or to our main roadways, but when they're so visible, it gives me pause to kind of. Entertain something so ugly, you know, I don't mean ugly, but you know, just so not, not designed for appeal. Kind of, it's more designed for industrial use.
Just as it should. Just, just a second, Carl, I see your hand. Hang on just a second, just have a comment to Kathleen's. I I hear what you're saying, and I I don't necessarily disagree, but just in. Trees do take some time to build, but if I draw your attention to industrial. Right there, you've got that green space, that O dot green space that's there, and you can't, from the highway, you cannot see any of those buildings. So, do you know what I'm talking about, Don?
No, I'm drawing blind.
So if, right as you're coming from three sixty-two, you've got that green space if you're heading east.
Yes.
Okay, you've got the green space there, where we occasionally have some homeless that O dot has to go in there cleaning up. That's all industrial back there, and you can't see any of that from the highway. And so this zone change allows for that same type of greenery, granted, it won't be tomorrow. But to be developed in front of that, and so you're not in fury going to be able to see it. So Carl, go ahead.
There it goes.
Oh, a previous council and a previous planning commission. Decided several years ago, and I'm not sure which timeframe that was, Kelly might be able to pinpoint it, but. That decision to make a I one and two more flexible, a more commercial type of look. Was made, and that's how. And that's how we established several of those buildings that look very commercial. I'm thinking about uh, Smoky Hearth and I was thinking about um, all those buildings in that long row of uh, facilities right there as you drive in from Fred Myers, including Fred Myers and uh, some of the stuff that's behind him. And I think that by relaxing that particular rules, set of rules, you'll certainly going to get some more industrial look, but that's sort of the thing that, and those businesses have learned to accept that there's going to be more of an industrial look. It, you see the, the different kinds of facilities that are in there now that look commercial and look industrial almost side by side. And I think that's some of the things that this is a real mix of and admittedly, it's a confusing zone, but it's one of those things that's done that way. So at this point, I think the council has a kind of a decision. Do we want to make it more stringent and move it to a more pure commercial or more commercial motivated or move it back, which includes some of the more industrial look, but also includes some of the economic development issues that the EDC has suggested that we look at and use. And I'm really an advocate of bringing in some more of the businesses. So I think this will do that. I think if we look at it uh, in terms of a real specificity, we're going to end up getting into some real issues. And I think in by and large, this makes some sense to me. So I'd be willing to even make a motion that we move forward on this for a number of reasons.
I would just ask Kelly one question. The, as a, as a planning commission, I know that several I'm guessing maybe at least five to eight special variances were passed for industrial zones to believe requirements that were going to put forth in this change. Do you know what, was it, was it, that was, am I right? Was it five or six?
You know, yeah, it was articulation, roof slope, color, based on all the things I'm suggesting tonight.
Including metal?
Yes.
It was very.
Well, metals are, metals are already allowed. Metal's already allowed in here. It says metal. So somebody after Sandy style was about to did not update this section because it says metal is not allowed as the primary exterior building material, except in the I two and I three zoning districts. So it's already allowed.
And that's what we're seeing.
So, yeah, I, I think it's really a decision to be made on like, do we want to give these coded, it's a chance to potentially help industrial growth and see how that works. Because right now, I, you know, since I've worked here, we've had very little industrial growth.
Yeah.
And so I think we need to try something.
What's the option of saying like within uh, two hundred, five hundred feet of the highway? Something like this wouldn't apply.
I, I, I think that's problematic. And the reason I say that is because if you talk to economic development folks like Elliot uh, that we hired for the Economic Development Strategic Plan, most, most uses that we want to attract to the city want to be located next to highways, interstates, shipping corridors. And so I think if you put a requirement in there like that, you're going to basically incentivize locating those farther away from shipping routes and therefore decreasing the chance of them being built.
Well, five hundred feet is not hardly going to affect your shipping. I mean, it's a, it's a visibility thing. It's just kind of a I just get concerned about what kind of uh, visual aesthetic we're setting ourselves up for when we allow the entrance to our town to look like metal buildings, one to twelve roofs, you know. I mean, it's going to look pretty, it can, you know, when I see what when they, you know, go lowball and, and try to make it as cheap as possible, which is what they want to do in many cases. And I understand that and support it if it's not at the entrance to our town. So that's kind of, I just feel protective of, of the aesthetics because I think that's, you know, the economic viability of our town depends on it looking, you know, aesthetically nice and not um, not just, you know, otherwise we just have car, car dealerships and RV things and storage things and all that. Who wants to stop there?
I, I don't think what we're looking to attract to this is car dealerships, storage facilities. It's manufacturing.
Yeah.
It's living wage jobs, which we do not have a lot of.
I, you, you, you have a, a vote for me to, let's get more industrial jobs. Let's get more industrial zoned. Uh, let's get more industrial development. I, I totally support that. What I'm saying is that within two to five, three, whatever the visibility factor is along the entrance to our town on Highway twenty six. I'm not talking about industrial way or anything like that. That's where I kind of feel a little bit more protective of, of having some caveats to say, we want something that looks a little bit more attractive and welcoming than a big metal flat roofed building. So that's.
I think you're talking about the I three, which has the potential for being reevaluated. Plus Kathleen, you know, there, there's a power line that runs right through there and that really restricts a lot of what can happen. So in, in my mind, this one is about the I two and the I one that we have around Fred Myers and Theater. I, I guess I'd be willing to make a motion here that we move forward on this. And I don't have it in front of me, but I move that we move, approve this particular code change for the design standards in industrial areas.
There's a motion by girl, by council.
Would you like me to make the first reading?
I'm sorry.
I just get called for the city recorder to make the first reading. Yes, I would. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, uh, this is ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero one and ordinance amending chapter seventeen dot nine zero of title seventeen of the Sandy municipal code.
All right, councillor Exner.
I'm, I moved that we approved the first reading.
All right, motion by councillor Exner, second by councillor Sheldon. Do we need to do a roll call or do you guys do a roll call? You want to do a roll call?
And that's up to you.
You guys okay with? Okay, well, let's do a roll call. We'll make it easy.
Okay, uh, councillor Maitland.
Hi.
Councillor Sheldon?
Yes.
Uh, councillor Walker?
No.
Councillor Hope, no, I'm sorry, councillor Exner. I'm getting confused. It's okay.
I say, yeah. Carl Exner says, yes.
Thank you councillor, councillor Hockinson. And council president Small.
Uh, yes.
That motion passes.
Okay.
Point of clarification though, I, I'm looking at street view and there are no power lines at the entrance to our town on the right hand side across from space age fuel. It's just all wide open. And that's why, yeah.
Motion is done.
Yeah, I get it. I just wanted to make a point of clarification.
There are power lines as you enter the city of Sandy. The sign says right there by the power line.
So the approval wasn't unanimous.
Correct.
So we don't need to do a second reading.
So we'll have to bring it back at a future.
Bring it back at future meeting. Perfect. It's funny when you're not, you're sitting in the seat, it's like, what's happening? All right. Thanks. So moving right along. So now we've got the second one. So, um, I would like to, I guess it, yeah, I would like to open the public hearing for this, for ordinance number twenty twenty two twenty six and seven forty five. Uh, first I will call for any abstentions from the hearing body. About conflicts of, oh, go ahead.
So, next one.
Okay, how about conflicts of interest?
Just point out, I was very confrontational about previous um, storage unit developments in the city prior to my becoming official.
Okay, good. We know that.
And, and councillor president, although I don't see a lot of conflict, I am a realtor and I'm in discussion with uh, storage units at this time.
Okay.
And I don't see myself this specific uh, issue to be any kind of interest conflict for me.
He is or is not involved?
Not.
Not this. Yes. So, all right. So I will call for the stock report from Kelly.
I think councillor Smallen.
It, it doesn't say anything about expertise, just says complex.
Because it's not quasi judicial.
Yeah. Okay, we did. It's okay, Kelly.
All this and stuff that's popular. There we go. Okay, so this one is a little bit different than the previous one. It is again a legislative hearing to adopt ordinance twenty twenty two twenty six. Uh, notice was sent to DLCD, um, the paper, city Facebook page. This one's a little bit unique in that it does require a measure fifty six notice is mailed to all property owners in the three zones that we're looking to either, that we're proposing, proposing to either eliminate issues or restrict issues. So the C one, C two and I one. A measure fifty six notices required whenever we basically eliminate a use type uh, within a specific zoning designation and potentially affect the property value. And you probably remember there's something called a measure forty nine claim that people can make around the state. A lot of times in the past, this was done with farm use and the restrictions uh, that were put on by the state and then people made forty, measure forty nine claims. Um, so that's where this kind of all stems from. Um, so we did do our measure fifty six notice uh, per the, per as required by state law. Um, so I just wanted to point that out that there was an extra thing on this one in addition to the noticing we did on the previous. Um, and we did, we did get some inquiries from that. Um, not a lot of comments officially in the record. Uh, but we did get some inquiries that we talked to different property owners and business owners around Sandy. And then there was a public hearing uh, before the planning commission on November twenty eighth. So I think councillor Maine might have participated that night. I don't remember. So this one is more typical of what you see on a more regular basis for me. There are six chapters that this would be impacting um, the non-conforming development chapter, which basically talks about uses that have been removed or um, altered. And so this is updating that chapter. Um, it's also updating the definitions to make that more clear. It's also updating uh, seventeen forty two, seventeen forty four and seventeen forty eight um, to either in seventeen, in seventeen forty two for C one and seventeen forty four for C two, it's proposing to eliminate self-storage. In forty eight, it's proposing to make some additional design requirements. It's a little bit different than the last one, which is heard. And then in seventeen fifty two, all it's changing, there's some words to keep the definitions clear through all the different chapters. This was brought to the EDAB, I guess is what we're calling now, the Economic Development Advisory Board in March of two thousand twenty two, so about ten months ago. Uh, they discussed that, I think, at a pretty good length. And um, the primary reasons for restricting self-storage are to promote more living wage jobs. You know, there's an example here that a hundred and sixteen thousand square foot self-storage facility in Washington created three minimum wage jobs. We did have a development proposal um, at a pre-app, I think it was a year or two ago for a U-Haul storage facility that would have been two hundred thousand square feet and they said it was employed two people. So you can see that it's very land intensive, as the second bullet point says, and creates very little job opportunity. Um, and then if they do fail, which I don't think is very often because people love to store things. Um, but if they do, I don't really think you can burn to anything because there's no windows, there's no pedestrian areas. It's it's kind of like a jail essentially. So the options that were presented to the EDAB um, were an outright ban. Um, eliminating the use in the specific zone, which they finally picked. Um, and then there was a couple of other options that were presented to them that other communities in both Oregon and Washington have done. Um, it is becoming more common that cities are starting to either ban them in specific zones or make them more difficult to install for the reasons I just said on the previous slide. So um, if you drive around Happy Valley, they're really making a lot of glass frontage and, and actually I think even now they're making, then put other commercial uses in the same building. So you'll see that often. Um, as the last slide, as the last bullet point on this slide says, development to be mixed use in nature. So some, like in Happy Valley are requiring that now. Um, I think one of the reasons that the EDAB and I think even staff would also say that you don't most likely want to have an outright ban is because they, you know, almost every use with the exception of maybe a couple in our zoning code are needed uses within a municipality. And I would, I would include self-storage in that, like even though we, you know, staff and the EDAB might want to reduce the locations that self-storage can be located in, there's still a time and place for them. And obviously because of how full they get and how fast there is a demand as well. So I don't think most people would argue that you don't want to make everybody drive to like Gresham or further just to go use their self-storage. Um, just a couple more specifics. I actually didn't do the slideshow, so if I'm tripping over some stuff, my apologies. So as I said, it's for removal in two zones. It's to restrict it in one zone with some additional design requirements and it's preserved for larger employers. It would continue as councillor Hockinson already pointed out, it would continue to be allowed outright in the I two uh, zoning district. So the purple area that we were just talking about on the zoning map, and I can bring the zoning map up again if you want to look at it. And then the other, another note, and this is something that a few of the existing mini storage facility owners have asked us in town. If there is an existing mini storage facility in the C one or C two zoning district, they would be able to still expand it slightly by twenty percent of the existing building footprint. So it'll allow them to continue their business model slightly larger. And then in the I one zone, which like the um, free up many storages, they, the, the code changes would allow them to expand even greater than twenty percent through a conditional use permit. So there is some flexibility for existing self-storage facilities. And when we did talk to the different people that own them in town and explain these different provisions that are being proposed, um, people seem to think that that was pretty accommodating. In the I one zone, um, we did have a few things. This is kind of similar to what Happy Valley's proposed on a few of these is only allowed in multi-story structures. This is really trying to incentivize building up with storage units instead of just continuing to take up more and more land space. And then the other one is on elevations running a street. So the app, what we call the activated uh, side of the building in Sandy style code language. They would not be able to have the individual garage doors that we so often see facing out to the street. It causes problems for kind of access management throughout the, the road. And then it's also just a pretty, it can be a pretty uh, funky look in my opinion.
But once we keep.
Having thirty garage doors in a row facing the street. Yeah, it's basically a.
Left is funky, right is preferred.
In the proposed code amendments, correct. Yeah. Neither building, neither building is really preferred. I would love to see neither one of these built on I one if, but in accordance with what EDAB was recommending, this is what we came up with. And then here's just some additional uh, design requirements. I think this is really kind of diving into the weeds. But I just, we just want to point this out. Um, at the November twenty eighth Planning Commission hearing, there were a few minor changes which we have implemented into what's being proposed tonight. And there was one public comment from the people that just opened up uh, the new mini storage facility. And she just wanted to point out that we shouldn't eliminate them entirely from the city limits.
We should.
We should not.
I'm, I'm not following what the comment was.
That we should not eliminate self-storage facility.
Self-storage.
From city limits altogether. And we, we told Mrs. Nanninger that the proposed code amendments do not do that. And with that, we recommend uh, approving the code amendments and adopting the ordinance.
Right. Thanks, Kelly. Uh, we'll move to public testimony. So for those wishing to speak, please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thought, it is sufficient to state that you agree with the statement of a previous speaker, even if that is all you have to say. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must be formally placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder at CI dot Sandy dot OR dot US. The staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. To offer public testimony, for those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand to indicate you would like to speak. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will call on each person when it is their turn to speak. Each participant will save up to three minutes to testify. The city recorder will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Council rules require each person state their name and address for the record. I will call for public testimony for the proposed ordinance.
Okay, I'll look for any raised hands in the room. Not seeing any, I'll look for any raised hands on. Not seeing any, I'll look for any raised hands on Zoom. And I do not see any raised hands tonight.
Okay, I'm sure you have a long recap.
I do have a short one. I would say that the lack of comments that we've received. Again, we noticed everybody with an individual mailer that owns property in C one, C two and I one. The lack of comments that we've received, I think is pretty indicative that people are not that worried about us removing these issues from these zones.
All right, I will call for motion to It's okay, we're all figuring it out, myself included. So a motion to close the public hearing. This, this side of the room is hot tonight. So I've got a motion by councillor Sheldon and a second by councillor B. To close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, public hearing is closed at seven fifty eight. Now we can discuss.
Could you go to Jeff or Kelly, can you just go to Google Maps and go to Street View and be across the street from this station, the Space Age Fuel Station?
Is this regarding the last hearing or?
Nope, it's for this. Cause that funky orange thing is exactly what could go in there is what I'm hearing.
Without change. If you don't do anything, they can go in there.
I mean, they can, they, they can do. Let me be clear what, what I'm asking. What I'm assuming this does is that in I two all the things that we just voted for before can occur. We can have a storage unit that's metal buildings, that kind of that ugly looking thing with the orange garage doors. We can have that at the entrance to our town. There's the entrance to our town. There are no power lines there. That's right across from the Space Age Fuel. And that's what I'm talking about when I say, you know, the visual aesthetics, there's, it's not like it's down in a hole. There's no visual screening there. That's what I'm concerned about is
All the way down the jar, correct?
This is right across from Space Age Fuel.
The signs on the city, the city entrance sign is where the, the power lines are. So this is certainly within the city, but it's not where the city is identified as.
This is where the I two zone is though.
No, no, this is I three. And I three does not, I three does not allow self-storage facilities.
So that's a good, okay.
You have to go clear into the city. So where the sign is, tractor supply is, to be able to get into what you're talking about.
I three, no storage units.
It currently doesn't allow it, and we are not proposing to allow it either.
Okay, all right.
And where Sabella is, just for clarification for everybody on the call, for Carl and everybody else, or councillor Exner, is that that's actually his own C two, just so everybody knows. So that would not, under the proposed code amendments would not allow self-storage facilities either. Neither would three sixty second and Bell. So that, that's one of my big fears with this is when I got the U-Haul inquiry and it was going to take up thirty acres and where do they want to locate it?
How about, how about three sixty second and Bell?
That's her. And yeah, that could all have many sources right now. With this code amendment, that would not be allowed to be many.
Remember that.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you. That's, yeah, no, perfection. That's good. So just out of curiosity, why did the Economic Development Committee not recommend banning them all entirely?
Yeah, good. And to that point, I was going to follow up, why not require the mixed use?
Jeff, do you want to speak tonight? Were you at that meeting or?
First one is, I, I mean, you were there too, Jordan. Do you want to speak?
Uh, as you can come up, David, come up to the mic. So I'll just, from what I recall too. There is an argument that they do serve that that there is community members that do need a place to store their boat or, you know, things that may be moving, you know, they're popular for a reason. And if you ban them outright, you know, we do have, I think, three now in town, but there is, there is, there is a use and a place for them. And I think it was identification that, that, you know, putting them in places that are not visible, that are not taking, you know, left or commercial property was sort of this middle ground. I don't know how much they talked about the mixed use, because that is something that we see now more commonly in, in cities. Make them look more attractive and more activated, but.
No, they did actually talk about mixed use a, a, a little bit, and they didn't like that option because for, for the reasons brought up already, that they're big and they take up a lot of space. And even if we make them look nice, they're still taking a bunch of space and all that. The reason they didn't want to ban them outright is to Jordan's point. They, there is a need for them. And while they certainly don't want to see him take up a lot of our space in the commercial areas and all that, they didn't want to ban them outright for that reason. And also because you know, for inclusivity reasons. I mean, they don't want to ban, because they have, absolutely have to. But that being said, they said it makes much more sense to locate these in industrial areas where they're not seen. That was the gist of it, basically.
So I, like, I'm kind of, I'll just be blunt. I'm kind of a fan of the mixed use thing. And, and maybe not in commercial areas, but in something else so that because I do recognize, and I always think an outright ban is kind of like kind of a little over harsh, right? We, we should maintain control to say yes as well as no. But I'm not understanding, and I I don't remember exactly what was proposed, but I know the next use was, what was it? Just kicking them out of the commercial areas?
Yeah, it's removing them from downtown, removing them from the C two. So actually, let me pull this on you now. Thank you, councillor Walker, for, for sure. I don't know why I didn't think of that.
So if you're looking just to be industrial as a
I mean, what, what, what I would say, this would be what I would recommend, is if
Before we start there, will you just tell me where, no, where in these neat little colors that are here? Which color, which color?
Pink, pink.
Okay, maybe a better point. I don't know what pink is.
Downtown essentially, right?
So it's eliminated from there. It's eliminated from all the bright red areas, which includes Johnson RV where the police station is across the street there. You know, where Tollgate is, where Safeway is, where Frommire is, where Sabella Nursery is, where Space Age is. But most importantly, we're bell on three sixty second or something. And then it's more restrictive in the I one zone, which is that light bluish area at industrial and champion like where tractor supply is, where the theater is, where the from our fueling center is.
Is that where it has to be multi-story?
Correct. And that's where it wouldn't be able to have just much garage doors all along the road. So that is where it would have some additional design elements keeping in line with. So if it's put in the I one zone, keep in mind also, it still has to follow Sandy style.
Right.
Element code. And then in addition to Sandy style, there's some more stuff that we're proposing to put on that, like less garage doors facing the road and multiple store, multi-story and stuff like that.
And just because you're, you're, your map key is over on the side, that I one is which color?
And so what about C three? Like the
I don't think C three allows self-storage. Let me look. Yes, I know I two, I three doesn't. I just confirm that. And C three the man on the spot here. C three does not allow self-storage facilities either.
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 All right, not allowed.
Currently. So yeah, currently both the, the C three and the I three do not allow self-storage, and we're not proposing to change that.
So my thoughts on the, on the commercial, dual commercially use, right? So and if I'm wrong about this, I two are, it sounds like that would be congruent, given what's kind of in those areas with like a, a business or something like that. Yes, the mixed use. And so my point is that the actual ground, right? You're getting some use out of that piece of ground with a business. And then I don't care if they store crap above it, like their own little attic, that's fine. But so that's, that's my thought, right? You're getting, you're getting a little more bang out of your buck as opposed to just saying no to that in certain areas, but also not being as restrictive in those areas. So.
So one thing I, I would recommend. He, to keep, if, 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 if there's a majority that wants to adopt this ordinance, I would, and there's some directive to staff to look into more mixed use requirements in a specific zone, I would recommend going forward with the ordinance and then looking at doing that with future code edits. And the reason I say that is because we have a small window right now with new sewer connections not being allowed. That if we adopt this right now, then I know when the moratorium is lifted, I won't get a big storage facility at Bell and three sixty second. And I really would want, I really want to prevent that if we can.
I think this council does too.
Yeah, I have a question.
Please.
Okay, so on, in, in that ordinance proposed changes, which we didn't go into all the details under seventy forty eight twenty that, that are in there. That's where it, the multi-story, this is for the I one restrictions and specifically outlined in the code. I just want to understand how C and D, each floor above the ground floor shall have a minimum fifty percent glass, I'm paraphrasing, and then seventy five percent of the width of any new building facing a collector or arterial should be devoted to interest creating features, including entrances, reliefs, murals, landscaping, transparent shore display of windows. I'd like to understand how those are Sandy style, since the whole section there is still subject to seventeen forty nine Sandy, seventeen ninety one twenty Sandy style. So that picture you showed of the glass, where, which is why I was asking, is that the preferred? Doesn't feel like an implementation of Sandy style.
It's not.
Right, that's so.
No good.
Can you meet these requirements and meet Sandy style?
Yes, the, these would be in addition to Sandy style, yes.
So the five percent D is not in conflict with the first story requirements under Sandy style?
Not that I'm aware of.
We could put a big old mural up there. An ugly mural?
I mean, you got to remember, this isn't clear and objective. So staff would have the discretion to look at Sandy style and look at this concurrently and make sure it fits both.
So what you're saying is you guarantee we didn't get an ugly mural?
I don't know if I can guarantee it, that we don't get ugly murals. It's, yeah, that's pretty hard to guarantee, but I think what this is
The word mural in there is that a meaningful word to throw in there. It seems like it's one that just could be problematic. If all the windows in the glass still fit within the, if all the glass and everything else that you're requiring here fit within Sandy style, then I don't have any objections other than the concern about murals.
I, I mean, we could strike that one word, that, that's fine with me. I don't.
I, I agree very much with that. I was concerned about the ability to satisfy Sandy's style with those glass buildings. And so if we can find a way to make it limited. I, I have a comment about anything in C one, I really would object to having these self-storage units in anything, especially we talked about three sixty second. I, I just don't think that that's really something we would expect. I had some experience in scapoes trying to sell a self-service, I think it was a six or seven storage unit. And quite frankly, we couldn't sell it, which brings me to, how would you be able to enforce the removal of something like that in the other? Like a C one, how would we ask them to remove that if they close down? I, I think it'd be tough, because many of these are so minimally financed that it'd be tough to enforce that and be something to be thinking about, about how the city would make that happen. Concern of mine, but anyway, the, the big piece is to see one land. When you stop that. And then finally, I'm not one to be a person about spelling or punctuation, but I noticed a number of problems with some spelling, especially some of the proposed code wording. I noticed a couple of spelling problems there, so might want to look at that.
It might also be that it's in track changes so that there might be some areas where there's like a a hash through where really, you can't really tell that because it's the number four or something like that. I've seen that become an issue in the past.
Any other comments?
We'll take a look at that.
Um, I have one, the caveat about the allowing existing storage facilities in C one or C two permitted to expand up to a twenty percent increase in building footprint. My concern is that, you know, twenty percent this year, five years later, another twenty percent, blah, blah, blah. So can we make that a one-time only offer?
I was going to ask that too. What is our, do we have any idea what our largest is to kind of get an idea of what?
I think the new storage facility is around fifty or sixty thousands per feet, I believe. So it'd be
Roughly ten thousand.
Ten to fifteen thousand.
Is it, that's what it's called, isn't it Sandy Vault?
I think it's actually called pre-up storage. It was originally called the vault, yeah. I don't know.
Boy, I don't either. But I, I think it would be something to support the limited to one expansion.
Yeah.
But even then, I mean, I mean, do we want to allow ten to fifteen thousand square feet of development on to that? I just, I think at some point, like, and, and if you did get a large one, I really, we're trying to do that, but if somehow that happened. You know, if you had a hundred thousand square feet, now you're at twenty thousand space for it.
Twenty thousand.
It says people buy the land up, it won't have space. So they have to go up.
It, it says your I one zone, you could do it with a conditional use permit. Perhaps that's what you want to add on to the C one, C two also. It was, is it, it's already, is that conditional use on, on both of them? With word, I don't know how, this is just your bullet statement. I didn't read the fine print on top.
So, uh, no, it'd be twenty percent in the C one and C two. And yeah, the intention was a one time. Yeah, if you have a hundred, or if you have a, what would be a hundred thousand square feet, you can go up an additional twenty five thousand or whatever. That was the intention. So I, I agree, there's a couple of additional words we can add there for clarity.
You might want to, you know, say a ma, up to a maximum of
Yeah, like a ceiling on that. Of some, of a reasonable ceiling, so that, so that you can't go over.
A ceiling, meaning a fixed time or
The one time, but I also would like it, I don't know, I'm going to throw out a number, a ten thousand square foot ceiling or something. So you can't go over two thousand square feet.
Well, there's only, there's only the one. And to limit it to twenty percent, I think, is you're, you're talking about that ten thousand. Everything else, there's nothing else that big, right?
Yeah, but we don't know what's, we're, we're also writing code and we also don't know what's going to be five, ten, fifteen years down the road.
We'll see one and see, won't be renewed. So this
See one, then two, three.
But the other thing is that you could say is that, you know, we're the existing ones that they could go up. But the, you know, the building footprint, because those multi-story ones, they're, they're all over the place now and they're not near as the land. You know, they don't eat up near as much land.
But the difference is we're talking about industrial land.
Excuse me, I'm talking about C one, two and I one, or C one and C two where we're allowing a twenty percent increase. If that was going up, you know, I guess when I see twenty percent increase, I'm looking at total square feet and not the footprint.
Right.
If you, you know, you said not to exceed ten thousand square foot footprint, but it could be twenty percent increase with volume or air square feet on the whole building that I could probably live with.
They're not going to have the real estate.
Three facilities on in Sandy right now, so only those three could expand. Anybody can come in right now and build a hundred thousand square foot storage facility if the zoning required it and they matter required, but you're not going to stop that spread. Right? So that by proving this code are not allowing this, it's going to change the fact that somebody can build humongous storage facility somewhere. This code will stop them doing it in these designated spots that we've selected.
Right.
And we don't want to see them.
And we don't want to see them, and then expansion is only going to be on those three existing sites if they have property and they already put a limit on it because you, you, it was ten to fifteen percent.
So can you, can I, can I have a point of clarification on this? Um, so the twenty percent thing would only apply to one property currently. The one to the west of the dealerships, that is the only current, the, that is the only self-storage facility in city limits that is in the C one or C two.
Yeah, sure, they don't have any real estate.
They have no, unless they go on to the dealership property.
So it's moot, it's effectively moot.
The only property currently in the I one zoning district is the new one that we're talking about. And then there's two currently, and there's four actually, there's two currently in the hole owned by two different people.
Right.
One's owned by, one's all the way on the south side owned by the people that own the cleaners and the other ones owned by Chris Warnock on the north side of the hole. And that's in the iTunes zoning district.
Yeah, with the industrial station.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. Where the landslide was.
They're twenty-three years.
Yeah. All right, so. Are we satisfied?
Okay, so the I one, sorry, it's okay, clear.
Yep.
So there is land that they could expand on, on the I one, the current guy, and he has land to expand on.
Correct.
He would have to go through a conditional use permit, correct?
But he had to go through conditional use already and he got, I believe, twenty, almost twenty variances on that whole process.
He, he had to go through a design review and he chose to go through a bunch of variances. He didn't actually need a conditional use permit. Um, but he did get like nine or eleven variances here, correct?
And that's the purpose of the planning commission, that they're to look at those things. And if that's something that is appealable, it will come to our council as well. So there is a control in that. But the piece that I'm really concerned about is C one, and I think we've already talked about that one, but um, I, I think the issues are relatively well spoken to with that specific limitation on the sealand. So if I'm not in favor of restricting industrial because of those controls.
So I, I, I totally respect what you're saying and understand why we're gonna pass this to all, blah, 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 vote yes for this tonight, but I would like to come back and, and see some of the stuff that we kind of talked about tonight later on so that we can short up even tighter, like, that's just my thoughts on.
You know, Rich, the way this process was presented to planning commission and to us, it, it seems a bit awkward in that the economic development committee kind of independently came up with a a very strong proposal that went through the planning commission and I'm a a little uncomfortable about how it came to us. And it, and this conversation kind of indicates how uncomfortable we all are. Um, I'm thinking we need to have a conversation about how that process worked.
Yeah, just so you know, the staff was proposing or thinking about doing some modifications to the code. The interest we were getting around Bell and three sixty second. So we decided that a first step would be the E dab and then it would go through the normal procedure with the recommendation attached. So I don't want to speak to if that process should be different in the future or not, but it was staff initiated, just, just so you know. We had some concerns.
Kathleen.
Beautiful.
My concern, car, um, my concern is that I, I've been trying to kind of keep track of what's been going on in committees and, and E dap specifically and their meeting, you know, I don't have time to watch two-hour meetings all the time. And so I kind of looked at the notes. No, we're no notes about this in the E dap that I could find when I was looking for them. I don't know if they've been added in. But I think it's really, you know, to people's point, really important to kind of have these. I, I don't like to have a fully baked cake brought to me where it's like, oh, wait, what, what are we doing? You know, it's just uncomfortable. And I feel, you know, I want to be able to support it and feel like I've kind of at least had, you know, I don't need to be driving the bus, but I'd like to kind of have a seat on the bus. And so just knowing and understanding what's being proposed or considered that if I did have a question about it or whatever, I could kind of ask the right folks. So that's kind of something that I'm gonna push a little bit of the goal setting, but I would like to see, the one last thing I think is, is there a possibility to put anything on the I one as far as a twenty percent increase or something like that um, at this time, or would that require a whole new uh, timing delay? That's my question.
I mean, I, I can bring it back at a future meeting.
No, I, I'm okay with trying to adapt it, but I'm just asking if we tweaked it with the twenty percent increase also applied to the I one, would that?
I, I, what, what I would recommend in, in uh,
Going back to what you said earlier.
Josh, I think he was on the line or attorney.
Yes.
He can speak up if I get any of this wrong. Um, but what I would recommend is if you want to adopt it tonight, passing a motion and in that motion specifically saying, here are the changes we would like to see with that motion. Um, and then we can make those changes and then bring it back for a second reading with those changes reflected. So you get to see them before you do the second reading.
So Kathleen.
That'd be my suggestion.
Make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that the twenty percent increase alluded to apply to C one, C two and I one.
And I'd like to modify the.
And modify the existing motion uh, with those changes.
So I'd like to modify this motion to accept that and remove the word mural from the section and that we refer to.
I was waiting for the mural.
Um, President, I'd like to make a comment anyway in that I disagree with the industrial issue in terms of expansion. I'll probably vote for this because I think it's crucial to get commercial stuff restricted. But I, I am in disagreement with the industrial side.
So it'll come back to us, Carl.
I understand, but it's sound like it's gonna come back with both commercial and industrial. I just want to make sure that point is out there.
We need a second.
We have two motions on the floor.
We do have two motions.
Unless.
I, 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 I would retract mine and go with his change.
So when a motion's modified, there's one motion on the floor and it's mine now. It's hers plus mine. My Robert's orders.
Whatever. I'm not gonna argue Robert's rules.
I think we're.
I'm relatively familiar with them, but do I have a second?
I'm on a roll.
Sweet.
Four.
We have a motion with a modification by Counselor Hookinson and a second by Counselor Sheldon. All those in favor? Uh, do I need to do a roll call again? Which I'll happily do. All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
I.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
So, Council President Smallwood, so this, my understanding of that motion was to um, direct staff to make those changes. To the, okay, so do we still need to, are we gonna try to perform a first reading of the ordinance tonight?
I skipped you again, didn't I?
That's okay, I mean, there's multiple ways we can do it.
Yeah, and I even, I even put an asterisk next to it so that I wouldn't mess it up.
Some question.
I'm gonna blame you guys.
What are the question on that? So when we want the ordinance modified, what are we actually doing in the first reading of?
Yeah, so, so I, and anyone can speak up and disagree. I, I think that now there could be um, a first reading of the ordinance and a motion to approve the first meeting, the first reading with the changes just discussed as my.
Okay.
So here's something that I'm concerned about is I voted yay and I know we had another nay that was specified because of those changes. I, I thought we said they would come back as a discussion item in presentation at the second reading.
And I know we've already made a motion, but I guess I.
Even I'm confused at this.
So I'm pretty confused. I guess where I thought we were going with this thing tonight is kind of. We're gonna approve Kelly's thing and ask staff to come back. And then that way we can have a conversation around the other stuff. Before.
That's not what I heard in the motion, that's.
I, I, I'm hearing you.
If there's a consensus on counsel to make those modifications, I mean, we have time to break back.
Okay.
More fully baked ordinance with those changes, so you can look at them.
So do we want to just table it for tonight?
But, but I think.
Well, we want to make the motion.
Well, we, we want to restrict the, the commercial.
Right.
I think what, I think what Counselor Sheldon's asking though is the additional um, code amendments he would like staff to look at for mixed use in the future, is that correct?
Yeah, that, and I mean, I, I, I guess I fell to see the urgency for the twenty percent addition in I. Well, the C two, C three, I, I get. Uh, but the, the I, that which seems to be the kind of the point of conjecture tonight. So what if, so what if we, what if we just work with me here for a second? What if we, yeah, what if we just approve the motion as originated? So just approve what was presented tonight. And then table staff come back with what Rich and what you guys would like to look at for a later conversation.
Which would be the mural. The I three twenty percent.
I'm at three.
I won.
I won.
I won. And mixed use.
Yeah. Because that'll give them a chance to get some information and then maybe a more robust discussion on our part.
But it also fixes their, their agenda of.
Protecting.
Protecting the commercial area.
So if, just hypothetically, we do that, we vote unanimous, it's done, ordinance goes.
Just the ordinance as it was presented. Yeah, and then Kelly will bring, and then Kelly will bring the rest forward.
I would vote yeah.
Okay.
And I would vote yeah.
So how do we kill that last motion?
Make a new motion, just make a new motion.
Okay. Uh, I will make a motion as we accept, um, what was the ordinance number? I'm sorry. Shall I prefer, prefer, perform the, perform? Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I can't say the word perform. Okay.
You guys can all blame me.
Jordan looks just as perplexed.
Have another motion to remove the modification since it was approved motion. To.
Well, we're gonna vote at the end of this reading.
Yeah, I make a motion that we remove the modification.
I second. There we go. We have a motion removed and a second by Counselor Sheldon and Counselor Hookinson. All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
All right, there we go.
Thank you.
As a point of, as a point of order, I think it's a good idea. So now it's done. Please.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six and ordinance amending chapters seventeen point zero eight, seventeen point one zero, seventeen point four two, seventeen point four four, seventeen point four eight and seventeen point five two of title seventeen of the Sandy municipal code.
Now I will call for a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two twenty-six.
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six.
And I second.
So I have a motion from Counselor Sheldon and a second by Counselor Exner. All those in favor? Hi.
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 All right. Uh, so now we need to do a second reading, call for a second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two twenty-six.
Okay, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six and ordinance amending chapters seventeen point zero eight, seventeen point one zero, seventeen point four two, seventeen point four four, seventeen point four eight and seventeen point five two of title seventeen of the Sandy municipal code.
Do I have a motion for the second reading?
We approve the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six.
I'll second. There you go, I like it. Uh, we have a motion by Counselor Sheldon uh, to approve the second reading and a second by Counselor Hookinson. All those in favor? Hi.
I.
All right.
Can I, can I ask one point of clarity?
Oh, seriously? Of course.
Would you be comfortable with us bringing this as part of the clear and objective package to make these additional edits to make it more clear for you?
When is that?
It's gonna be in the next four or five months.
Can, I, I feel like this council would probably like to hear some of that sooner than that.
Even via email.
Okay. We'll be talking about.
Works right or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I suspect somebody might decide that they're gonna see a future change in, in four months, they'll end up. Trying to do something limited.
Yeah. Okay. Moving right along, uh, Hoodview disposal and recycling rate increase request.
This guy's been really.
Thank you, Kelly. They have been, thank you for your patience, guys. While we. We've learned a lot. I think we have. Yeah.
Good evening, uh, Council President and Council members. Um, you will likely recall that two weeks ago, we had uh, staff from Hoodview disposal and recycling here to have a initial discussion on a rate increase that will become effective March first of twenty twenty-three. Uh, section seven point three of the existing franchise agreement allows for it uh, annual adjustment to the rates. There were a handful of questions that were brought up uh, at last meeting. But run through those questions and answers real quick, and we'll turn it over to Josh and Chris to answer. Or kind of with you guys for future discussion.
Need to.
Can you hear me okay, Counselor Exner?
Excuse me, I got disturbed here.
All right, um, so I think the first question and probably the most important on everyone's mind this evening was do you have to, or does the, the existing agreement mandate that the council uh, approve these rate increases? Our prior attorney, David Doofman, took the approach of, yes, the contract slash agreement, whatever word we want to use there. Um, it's pretty clear that the council shall, if all the criteria is met, approve these rate increases. I talked to our current attorney, um, Josh Soper, uh, a week or so ago about that. He had a similar analysis that as long as the criteria of the agreement are being met, that the council shall um, uh, approve the request. There is a, you know, some other options that the council has going forward as far as uh, doing a, a market test of rates um, or doing a rate adjustment, adjustment in connection with changes to the scope of services. We haven't really talked about either of those options, but those are something that we could incorporate next year when we're looking at, you know, doing another reviews, looking at requesting another rate increase, doing a more exhaustive sort of financial analysis of contract allows for. Um, but at this juncture, uh, we kind of, they have made their request. They complied with the existing language under that annual rate request, and so it seemed prudent to go forward with the approval of that uh, uh, request. The second question that was brought up, um, although this might not be in order, but the second in my recollection was a discussion around a financial assistance program. Um, I will let you guys expand on that a little bit, but the, the topic was um, you know, presented to you guys. I know that's something you will uh, do some research on, so no definitive answer on that yet. But I'll turn it over, you can just moment to add clarity or, or color to that. Um, and then I believe the last item uh, was a question regarding what our rates look like compared to neighboring communities' rates. I have not gotten um, a whole lot of information back yet on that request. I did reach out to a member of Plaquemus County's team that's sort of not overseas county-wide waste disposal, but is very familiar with all of the cities, you know, within Plaquemus County and was assured that our rates are very similar to those rates of other cities um, with similar services. I can get more, will get more information later this week and I can send that out via email to the council, so you're all aware of what those rates look like, but I don't have a final number tally of those at this point.
I, I, I just Googled a few cities uh, and just, and they're comparable.
Okay.
So.
Perfect.
Just, you know, like Estacada and I forget, I know a lot of something.
Some have the information readily, readily available, other, you know, entities don't, or it's very similar, uh, so. Um, and then last but not least, one other question had come up regarding the term of the agreement. Um, the original agreement was signed in twenty fifteen and it was a ten-year period. And that agreement automatically renewed every July first for another ten-year period. Um, I was made aware today, thank you to the, the team at Hoodview, that when the uh, franchise agreement was amended, transferred, um, there was a change from that seven-year period, or from the ten-year period to a seven-year period. Um, and so the earliest termination date at this point feasibly would be June thirtieth, uh, twenty thirty-one, based on the existing contract.
So.
Sorry.
How does that happen? So you have, you have a contract. And because the contract changed hands, there's an adjustment to the contract. Was that, that obviously was written in the contract?
It was written into the amendment during that franchise agreement transfer.
For we shortened the windows.
They went.
Didn't want to renew it for ten years.
It went from ten to seven.
Right.
So we can't terminate it until twenty thirty?
Not without the infringement contract.
So with that, I will turn it over to.
We can blame Jeremy.
To Hoodview to answer any further questions or add anything that I had missed.
Yeah.
And then back to council for further discussion.
Sure, yeah, you know, uh, President Smallwood and Counselors, thanks again for having us this evening. You know, I would just like to comment and follow up on, on Counselor Sheldon's request to look into the financial system assistance programs. Uh, I did talk to some of our other markets that waste connections overseas and there are some municipalities that we do some of those financial assistance programs in. So I think, you know, that's certainly an option here in Sandy and we can work with city. So I think, you know, that's certainly an option here in Sandy and we can work with city staff to develop some options for some financial assistance. Thank you. Make a great point as to a lot of folks on fixed incomes and challenges with increases, not only in our industry, but across the board. So we're certainly open to that option and looking at ways to look at some reduced rates for, you know, elderly folks or people that are handicapped or different options that relate to income. So I did do a little bit of research on that, but don't have full answers tonight, but certainly open to that as well. And then, you know, I don't think I have a lot more to add other than, you know, we acquired this franchise late last year as a as a company, and we're very committed to being premier solid waste taller in the city of Sandy as well as the other markets that we operate. We want a solid partnership, want to have relationships with all of you, including city staff, and I feel Tyler and our relationship has been solid and we are committed to that forward. So feel free to please reach out if there's questions on the contract. Any of our services, any of our customer service at any time, we're very happy to continue that positive relationship that the Kehwood family had previous to us taking over, so.
The one other item I will add that I forgot to mention to Council Hilkenson's point, the last meeting was the tipping fee increase, and I was able to get documentation that that changed to occur. So just for the, yep, wanted to make sure I made that point clear. And then one interesting fact that I learned today, which makes sense now that I know it, but hadn't really spent a lot of time thinking about it, is, you know, when, I don't want to get this too off topic, but I think it's an important point to be made. When services canceled here locally due to a weather event, it is very often or could be very often related to a larger issue, not necessarily with the desire to conserve the area, but because the transfer station that the waste that is picked up that needs to be disposed at is also closed. Or a larger site further down A four is closed due to weather there. So we have this chain reaction of one site being closed elsewhere could impact the other sites that are more local or than the pickup locally. You could probably articulate that much more clearly than I just did, but the the chain reaction effect I hadn't really thought about with respect to how services can be interrupted.
Yeah, I I think you said it fairly clear. A lot of times our decision to operate is impacted by what the transfer station decides. If a transfer station closes, we simply can't pick up solid waste or recycling because we have nowhere to dispose of it. We can't leave that in our trucks in overnight or or extended periods. The last event over the holidays was exactly that metro transfer stations, which should the council is familiar with metro, made the decision to close because of the weather. So we had no opportunity to dump our trucks anywhere. Kind of the Tyler's point, the metro region relies heavily on trucks to move the material from the metro region out to the gorge where the the landfills are located for the solid waste. And so oftentimes, even if a transfer station is able to operate, their trucking company cannot get out the gorge because of a gorge closure on A four or fourteen, which happens quite frequently. That oftentimes drives the transfer stations to close as well because they just pile up with material. So, you know, our decisions and our local teams' decisions to shut down are not taken lightly. They are probably one of the toughest decisions that we make in our careers because it has such an impact on the community, on our customers, on our team, as well as the challenges of collecting that extra volume when we don't operate. So I appreciate you bringing that up, Tyler. You know, we, the last thing we want to do is cancel service, and it is definitely a challenging piece of a larger puzzle because of the solid waste system in the in the region, so. Hopefully that helps there some.
And I hear that, you know, lived in this town a long time, including two thousand eight, when there was two feet of snow on the ground, and I don't recall garbage service not coming. So there's that piece. My other issue is the fact that when you neglect to pick up people's garbage, you still charge them for that garbage pickup. Well, most people, when they don't go to work, they don't get paid. So you don't perform a service, but you're still charging the citizens for a service that you're not providing. And as a as a counselor, I struggle with that.
It's understandable. I would just say that typically, that that's a common, you know, question that we get in our business. We would collect all of the volume. We wouldn't take less that next week if we didn't collect, but I fully understand your point. It's a tough, tough situation.
Typically, you know, if we missed, like last time we missed the Friday, the next Friday we picked up double at no charge. If we issued credits for the for the day that was missed and then charged extra for the actually picked up on the following Friday, it would work out. Not not well for the customer. They would end up paying more.
Not everybody probably has though.
Yeah, I was gonna say, well, I mean.
I know I don't.
There's only so much room in the garbage. Which is part of the challenge. I see I see the effects of it when I, and I think that's another thing for the communities. We see the effects of it when it sets out like a road.
Then we get a windstorm.
Windstorm or critters get into it, right? Comes all over our neighborhoods and so that that's really what we feel like. I felt like, and I may be wrong, you guys have maybe experienced this more than me, but I felt like if they missed, they were out there like the next business day, kind of running double routes picking up the old one. And I and I just would wonder why that's not the, I think that would improve the morale of the citizen, right? To get it away, so I'm not keeping it in my garage and just all the other nonsense that comes with another. We could certainly explore different ways to make up service and and other municipalities. Yard waste is not picked up, so we can get out there and pick up, you know, all the trash on the on the next Monday or wherever the day may be. So that's definitely an option we can explore with city staff, and that's something you guys would like to go with. You know, most people don't have any yard waste during the winter when we have these storms. So if we skip those routes, we can have the capacity to pick up the double trash in a more timely manner. Carl's got a question.
Go ahead. It's actually a comment and then a question is that if I do get something like that where somebody is, one of your trucks decide not to go during that day. I'm one of those that just crams that poor old garbage can as full as possible, and the lid is up behind and, yeah, garbage stacked up there about a foot or two. What is it that stops that from being picked up? And and then do you decide that there is a limit and you just walk away from those cans? It's like I say, first day is not traveled because of weather, and the second day you come through there and you see a two-foot high above the garbage can.
I understand your question, and we would still service the can if we had to get out and take bags off the top to be able to safely dump it and then refill it. That's what the driver is expected to do. But that's not happening. I would definitely, I'd like to know about it, and so I can address that with our with our drivers.
I certainly, I was told that there is a smile and then there's a yawn when it comes to the tops of the garbage can lids. And so I perceive that the yawn is the limit of what you would ever pick up, and the smile is preferred. That comes across very well.
Generally determines when we would charge for an extra bag. If it's just a small smile, it would be no extra charge basically, generally, but if it's a a yawn, that would constitute an extra charge.
Okay. Garbage can humor.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
Kind of between staff and you guys. Jeff, we don't have a spot on our website that's easy to find out who our trash hiring is.
That's a good point.
And it would make sense because we talked last time about notification. You've had some problems with your websites and things. It would be nice if we could push that info to the city. So if you've got a question, you go to one spot, City of Sandy, and if you just pop an alert or something, trash service to shut down for days, libraries closed. You know, figure out a way to handle all those kinds of alerts. That that would be a suggestion, I think, to improve some communication on these events. And you could even add those instructions of it's gonna be a week, guys, put it back in the garage, or it's coming tomorrow, keep it out, you know. That would be my request.
Affirmative.
So can I make a motion? Let's everybody. All right, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three oh two, a resolution approving an increase to solid waste collection rates because I'm so excited to make that.
I'll second.
Right, I have a motion by Council Hilkenson in a second. What happens if I abstain? A second by Council Exner. I am gonna abstain. I'm going to abstain because I cannot get conscious vote for this. Really bothers me. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Mine.
Post. There you go.
Motion.
Motion passes. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
We'll see.
Yes.
Maybe not on that last topic you went over, but we'll be back.
I'm afraid of. All right, and we're down to the report for the city manager.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of reminders, the Plaquemine County Association Dinner in Oregon City is next Thursday. I think we have one R C P. It's also the night of the open house for the person, right? Where the we were talking about during the work session. So we do have a conflict. Our date is March twenty-third, Beatty Smokey Hearth, so mark that on your calendar. That's a Thursday evening. And we're working on logistics and a plan for that, so stay tuned, but it'll be March twenty-third that Sandy will be hosting. I think we're in a good shape for City Day at the Capitol, and we met about that and have a few, I think, three meetings now on the calendar in the afternoon. So we're looking forward to getting in front of our representatives, and I think Senator Gerard too got scheduled today, so that's great. And then you probably saw the news on that. I did share the to the rest of the council, the funding requests for our water system reinvestment project and what our our big ask will be this year for the state legislature and funding one of our key infrastructure projects. And on that, we did get word that we've been invited to submit for a special public works loan. And I think there's three in total for that, totaling up to ten million. So those will come back for council authorization. When we we work through that process, we did submit an application and then I think we're we're pretty high on the list for all three of those loans. And then on the drinking water SRF, we're also pretty high on the priority list for that program too. So those will be coming up in front of council over the next couple of months to get your authorization. But again, compared to like a revenue bond and other things to fund these projects, these these loans through business are going to have low interest rates, amounts that could be forgivable. So kudos to the team for for pursuing those and getting those locked in. There's questions about the Tickle Creek signs. It's on the list. I talked to Ryan today. They've been hammered with other stuff and and especially working down at the plant right now, helping out with that construction and troubleshooting some issues as they're getting things online down there, but it is on the list to move those signs. So get back to you on that, but yeah, that's it for me.
All right, moving on to Don.
Cool. I think a couple of couple of things I just want to make everyone aware of. Had a meeting with Jenny and her team, you know, I don't know, a week or two ago. It's just, it's so impressive how they're continuing to mature from a year ago even when the culture of root cause and proactively planning ahead and everything wasn't necessarily, so it was more reactive. We're starting, I am feeling like we're starting to see transitions to more proactive. And, you know, the answer, the question is always asked, when are we going to be zero, you know, zero defects or hundred percent compliance? And that they may still be a ways off, but the trend is is improving. So I'm, that makes me happy. And also really impressed with Rochelle and speed at which she's moved since she got that council authorization in only two weeks, and we're already two meetings in and first count of, so anyway, that's going great. I'm just gonna keep saying this radar, 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 radar. And I look at police, I don't think this is a police issue. I think this is a public works issue.
Yeah, or working. Chief has a quote from the from the trailer, at least.
The trailer would.
And then we want the.
The rest of the public works, I think, so. And the budget's coming out, but see if it doesn't make it before then.
It's the list. We did our department retreat, so.
Nice. I said I said it enough. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Carl, you're next.
Couple of things. One, just a reminder that this is winter, and there are a number of things that in wintertime that we need as a city for volunteers, things like Meals on Wheels, sort of clothes and things for the thrift store and other things. So I don't forget to be thoughtful about some of those things. Appreciate people thinking about it. And the second one is a request from, I assume it's city manager. What is the the attendance, not attendance, but the membership of our committees? We've had a number of interviews. I know I was involved in the E D U, and I want to make sure that I I understand what the committee members are. Are we up current on our webpage or how are we doing there?
This should be pretty current. You know, we've made some, a lot of improvements in the way that we track seats and vacancies and what positions and what their terms are. Are you also asking for what the attendance is for each of the appointed?
No, not at this point, maybe in the future, but mostly I'm looking for names. Hate to say that we don't see any names in our committee, but I'm more interested in the ones that we have established.
You want to make sure the rosters are accurate that on the web.
Correct.
Yeah.
Actually, I believe that everything that's on the website is accurate. If you notice anything that's not, please let me know.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't know because I don't know all the different options that have happened. So thank you. That's it.
All right, Kevin. Um. Let's see. The first thing I was gonna say and talk about is the, it's quite a bit of blowdown. You know, this last windstorm was really a wall up on Tickle Creek Trail. And one of the things that I'm would like to see us kind of consider is try to get what we've done in the past in like Sandy River Park and all, it's gotten almost free trees from Forrester, Oregon Forestry Department, they give them out, and they have, they always have extras and stuff where there's done, yeah, they're just plugs, Doug fir cedar, that kind of thing. And I just feel the need, like January, February is tree planting season. And so trying to kind of get some trees out there to start replacing all these trees that are falling down out there. It's kind of a short window. You know, you don't want to be out there in April and May trying to plant trees because they don't survive very well. And so again, it's a very low cost thing. I'm willing to kind of help put together a planting party. You know, I can kind of involve the key club or something like that, but it would just be helpful to kind of get some Doug fir and cedars planted in that area to try to help with that. Second thing I have, I'm thrilled to hear about the Tickle Creek signs. And the second thing is, I I agree with what you said at the kind of at the get-go about the progress that Jenny and Rochelle and stuff, those folks have made. I will kind of point out with respect to Jenny's folks, Jenny's department stuff, is that I I don't, I don't take it as a negative about a year ago, but I also recognize that we've added, you know, not only have we poured a lot more money into that whole air effort, but we've also added a whole nother position. And so there.
So this isn't a slam on.
Oh, I know, I know.
Clarify my position.
Yeah, I know.
This is what changed. The focus here, I think, has driven all the rest of the change.
I maybe took it differently, so I appreciate that. And then I got some really good feedback at the Kuanis group about the lights and stuff, and they're very interested in pursuing and expanding that next year. They also are wanting to line up their, they they do the Easter egg thing, hunt thing in concert with the rec department, and so they'll be reserving that, the gazebo and all that for that effort. So so they'll be proceeding. And there is the Kuanis is also having kind of a February fun night to try to encourage more signups. So they're gonna, they've rented the community center, and I say it's Saturday, February fourth, I believe, thirty-fourth. And they're having Olive Garden spaghetti dinner, and I believe the price is free or five dollars or something like that, and everybody's invited. So I'll send something out about that, but it's a good opportunity to kind of, if folks are interested in helping out, they do so much for our community. Like I said, the Easter egg hunt and they're involved in a lot of different things. So.
Yeah, that's all I have. Thanks.
A whole lot, but kind of on the shoulders of what they were saying about the improvements, I would hope that are more torn, didn't last too long. That being said, I still have yet to see any kind of ordinances that hold developers accountable for violating our city codes that make it so it's not. that make it so it's not a good business decision to do such. So I'd really like to see that in the near future, and I know staff has a lot on their plate, but I want to be cognizant of that, but I also want to make sure that when that's lifted, the business decision is affected to violate what we put in our code and our agreement that we have.
Chris?
I need to become more prepared. I, I have just really a couple of questions and a couple of statements, so my first statement is, thank you to Jeff and Jordan for both my indoctrination to the city council, I'm trying to keep up with the emails you're sending to learn as best I can, a little bit, so.
Drinking of a fire hose?
It's good. And I haven't really done a whole lot, because I was on vacation in Los Angeles, so I don't really have an update. My question would be, is for the city council boards and commissions assignments, when does that come out?
I hope the mayor's coming out with those when he gets back.
Because I, I don't, and that, my second question, when do they start, meetings start? Like, because if, if they're going on right now, is anybody attending them?
We're, we're still under the old.
Oh, but under the old.
Assignments. Until he makes new ones.
Which you have absolutely no responsibility.
Yeah. You're a free agent. That's okay right now. I do want to participate, so.
Awesome.
I'm, I'm a big, I like to look at the documents, like, thank you for, Don, again, for giving me the agenda. I like to be in front of the meeting and read all the material and learn as much as I can, so when I can come, to your point. I don't even know why they introduce Councilman Walker to Catholic, thank you, to be, to be knowledgeable when I get here, so I can, I can learn on something, not having those answers ahead of time, this is really hard, but I think since that.
That's all. Awesome. I don't have a whole lot. The Community Action Center, we're gonna cut in this tomorrow morning, if anybody's interested at 10 a.m., they've been closed doing some remodeling, so that'll be happening. And other than that, if you guys know of anybody that might be interested in running for the Sandy Fire Board, there will be three people up for election coming up, and we really, I believe that board needs new blood, so I would greatly encourage. If you know of anybody that might be interested in running for the Fire Board, it's, would be dismayed, and they would need to have their paperwork in by March 16th, I believe, this day.
Residents only?
They just need to be in the entire district, the entire district, so yeah, yep. So if you know of anybody, please do, and that's all I got.
Exactly.
What'd you say?
But Jeremy.
Right? That's all I got, so meeting is adjourned at nine o'clock on the dot.